We're going to call this meeting to order. The chair will entertain a motion to a --
No, Mayor.
Oh, no, that's not it.[16.64][16.64](Laughter) All right, do we have?
You have the agenda.
Oh, okay. And this way, we're just going to go ahead and move forward to council briefings, okay? Yeah, I thought I would have to do a special, but we'll do that later, okay? And folks, if I can make a recommendation, we have a very ambitious schedule today, and we have to try to get into closed session as close to four o'clock as possible. The other thing, Mr. Moss and Mr. Jones are going to be running late, and Ms. Abbott is going to -- is home with an illness, okay, just to let everybody else know. Okay, so at this point, you know, we're going to have the -- Mr. Ramirez come up and chat with us on the -- on external audit. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Thank you for having me here today. If you want to bring up the PowerPoint, this will be the shortest presentation that you have. All right. And the reason I am here today is because the city code requires the city auditor to coordinate and manage the audit contract of the city's comprehensive annual financial report. And the reason why I'm presenting to council, because the city charter requires an annual independent audit with the firm officially selected by the council. Okay? So the contract we had with our current external auditors has expired. It ran for two years with an option for renewal of one year for three additional options. So in total, it has ran for four years. We decided to go out with a new RFP, and this involved staff from finance, the city auditor's office, both city as well as schools, because the firm is going to serve the city, the schools, as well as the development authority. And basically, our purpose was to recommend to the council, as well as the school board separately, on the firm to conduct the independent audit. So you know we're the internal auditors, but we also have the firm that comes from the outside, the external auditors, to do the audit of the financial statements, okay? So after working with purchasing, we went out and did an RFP to the largest international, national, and regional accounting firms. We are proud to announce the committee unanimously selected Cherry Beckett. Cherry Beckett is based here in Virginia Beach. And as you can see, the cost for the city was $171,000, schools $56,100, development authority $18,325. Total that we're presenting today for your approval is a contract of $245,525. It's for two years, similar to the last contract, with an option to renew for three -- single years for three additional years. Any questions?
Any questions at all? Lyndon, that was great. Thank you.
Brief, bright, and gone.
(Laughs) Ah.
Thank you.
Maybe a trend for today. Mr. Duhany.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the Commonwealth attorney is going to come and present their budget for the next fiscal year.
Welcome, Colin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It's good to be with you all. I am going to take the auditor's comments of the shortest presentation of the day as a challenge and see if I can't beat him. But seriously, I am not going to go through my PowerPoint simply because I know it's all in your packages there in front of you. If you do look through it, you'll see that my proposed budget for this year is actually coming in at $83,960,000 less than the previous year's budget. That is attributable to -- I have some high-level individuals who have gone on to other things. One of my deputies went on the bench here recently, and we're replacing those individuals with entry-level positions. So that explains the reduction in my budget. I will say that with the police department rolling out 400 additional body cameras, in addition to what we had all agreed to previously for funding with my office, I was approached by the city manager and by his budget department to discuss whether I felt we needed to renegotiate the agreement that we had in place for funding for my office due to body cameras because of the additional 400 cameras going out on the street. My response was that I did not feel that that was appropriate at that -- at this time. And the reason why I say that, even though there will be 400 more body cameras, is two things. Number one, we are just going live with phase four of the body camera rollout right now, and so far, the number of hours that were projected to come to my office, we have not hit those marks. We've been less than the projected numbers. But in addition to that, my office is now experimenting with a new transcription service that I think will be able to cut down significantly on the amount of time my attorneys are spending with the body camera footage. So at this point, I do not feel that I need additional positions due to those extra body cameras, but I may be back here next year asking for some, if need be.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Staley? Okay, we're going to go Rose Mary, and then Mr. Belucci.
Good to see you. Thank you very much for all that you do for us. When the defender attorneys came before us, what -- is that money in your budget, or do we fund that separately, or where does that money?
No, the public defenders are a completely different agency, and it is my understanding that at this point in time, they are not in the proposed budget. But any kind of supplement for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Belucci.
Nice to see you, Mr. Staley. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for everything that you and your team at the Commonwealth Attorney's Office do for our city. I'd like to follow up with the line of questioning that Councilwoman Wilson raised, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
And talk a little bit about -- and get a couple of things on the record, and talk a little bit about the disparity in pay between the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the Public Defender's Office. You came before us previously and gave us a very, very wonderful presentation that really laid all that out and spelled it out. But one of the critiques or criticisms of the proposal to create some sense of parity, at least, between the Public Defender's Office and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office is that it's a state responsibility. But in fact, I want to point out that you're here before us today because your office is included in the city's budget, and the Public Defender's Office is not. And so that's where the disparity comes from. There is a disparity in the state, and that's a separate issue that the General Assembly needs to address. But in fact, the disparity between -- the greater disparity between members of your team and members of the Public Defender's team is a result of the city actively choosing to compensate your office above and beyond what the state does. Would you say that's correct?
I would say that's correct. There has been additional funding for my office in the form of a supplement for many years, since as long as I've been with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. And what that has done is allowed my office to attract individuals that would be coming from other offices with experience. You know, oftentimes, in my entry-level positions, I get applications for people who have been prosecutors or practicing law for five or six years, who are willing to come in as entry-level positions in my office. It also enables us to keep attorneys longer and have experienced attorneys there who know what they're doing and handling of the cases and that kind of thing. So it gives us a stability that many offices don't have. It also allows us to provide services to the citizens of Virginia Beach that other Commonwealth Attorney's Offices are not able to do. But as you pointed out, since the city has given that supplement to my office, the public defenders simply receive what the state minimum salary is, and that makes it difficult for them to retain good people. It makes it difficult for them to be able to have some sort of stability and consistency and experience in their personnel.
I appreciate that, and I think what you just stated is critically important as we consider these discussions, because the responsibility of the disparity lies with the city, because we've made a policy decision to add a supplement to your budget, which I completely and 100% support and recognize the need for. But in denying a similar supplement to the Public Defender's Office, we've created a disparity that ultimately affects people who receive their services. And it affects also our -- really, our entire city, our entire community, because your office is interacting with attorneys who are, in comparison, less experienced, less knowledgeable, not because they're not good lawyers, but because they simply just lack the experience and expertise that comes with time. And those are, you know, they're attracted to jobs, of course, you know, that compensate greater. And so I just won't really want to really emphasize that point. I want to drive that point home, because we're going to hear about it again as these discussions -- as these discussions play out. And the disparity exists with the policy decision the city made, not with the state. And I appreciate your support for that, and I'm hopeful that members of this body will see fit to add a supplement to create equity in the system, in our criminal justice system. Thank you.
I'm reluctant to belabor the public defender issue, Mr. Staley, but I got -- I've just got one, a couple of quick questions to ask that do relate to that as well, since we obviously are going to have an issue. I appreciate your being here, appreciate your support for trying to get more equity in pay issues on public defender. It makes a world of sense to me, both as a lawyer and a citizen, that our government -- our trial system is based on fairness. Justice can't come without -- if the deck is stacked. And this is one that -- I'm not pointing fingers at anybody about how it happened. It just is what it is. But I think people are becoming more and more aware that the disparity, if it continues and particularly if it grows, becomes more damaging. But I just want to make the point again, for the record, too. Are you aware that other cities in Virginia, not as large as the city of Virginia Beach, have supplemented public defender pay?
Yes, sir. I believe that there are five or six other localities that have supplemented public defender pay. I couldn't tell you which ones they are off the top of my head, but it is my understanding that there are supplements out there.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Are you fully staffed, or do you have some vacant positions of your approved numbers?
I do have some vacant positions that I am currently filling at this point in time.
Are you having difficulty filling them?
I am having -- I am having less applications than I typically have in previous years. So being a law enforcement agency, I think we are beginning to experience what the police department and the sheriff's office are also experiencing, is there are people who are choosing to look elsewhere for employment. So typically, I have maybe a third of the applications, maybe even a quarter of the applications that I typically would in openings that I advertise.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Staley. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and I do think that the city auditor beat me in time, without a doubt. That's right. Thank you all very much.
Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Stephen Williams from ECC is going to present on their fiscal '22 budget. And also, this is Director Williams' last seated council budget meeting, as he's moving on to the private sector.
Good afternoon, everybody. So like the city manager said, this will be the last time you see me in this role from this side of the podium, but I will still be in Virginia Beach, and I'm a big cheerleader for the city, right? I think we've got a great city here, and I appreciate all the support that you've given me and my department through the almost six years I've been here. So we'll just talk a little bit about our budget. Our budget's pretty straightforward. We have about 133.75 FTEs. The .75 FTE is a part-time employee that we have that works on some of our special projects, our policies and procedures. Three divisions which make up our operations division, our administrative division, and our technology division in the department. And our budget's a little bit over $11 million. This is what the budget looks like. You know, about 91% of the budget goes towards general operations. We do set aside money for our training. There's a lot of training, as you know, that goes into working 911 and 311, and so that's important and critical that we keep that up. And then a lot of technology involved in what we do, right? We, you know, the rest of my counterparts, the chiefs, talk about needing police vehicles or fire engines and things like that, but we leverage technology, computers, everything we do rides on some sort of technology. And as we move forward next to 911, that's just going to increase our technological This just lays out the budget a little bit for us, breaks it out by our training part, our technology and support, and then the general operating expenses. And we do get some grants from the state. Typically, it's a $3,000 a year grant, and that's utilized to -- for additional training purposes that we can utilize. And we also work with our regional partners, Chesapeake, the Eastern Shore, Norfolk, Hampton, Newport News, and we do some regional training as well. All right. Just want to talk about one of the major changes that are in our budget this year is we, you know, because of COVID, obviously, departments were asked, you know, to reevaluate their budget uses, how they do positions, that sort of thing. So we're going to take some funding from our positions that was available and put it towards recruitment and retention. That's still a huge issue in our department. Unfortunately, it's an issue everywhere, so I can't pick up the phone, or my staff can't pick up the phone and say, hey, what are you doing different in your city to make things better, to keep employees once you get them trained, or even get people to apply for positions? That's one of the things over the years we've noticed, as our application pool gets smaller and smaller each time. Our 911 employees start out at roughly $37,000 a year, which is about $17 an hour, give or take, and that's not a lot of money for what they do, right? And you'll hear that probably from all the directors that come after me, but, you know, especially with things like Home Depot raising their salaries, Walmart, places like that, it's really hard to compete when you have to say, hey, you're going to have to work 24/7 shifts and nights and holidays and weekends and be away from your families, right? So we're going to put some funding towards that. And whether that goes towards -- or we're requesting that, for you guys to approve that, whether that goes towards sign-on bonus, longevity bonuses, potentially leveraging some technologies to help us take some of the workload off of our 911 and 311 employees. It's been a tough year, as you know. 311 took over 5,000 calls when we first went live with the virus vaccines, and that's the most calls we've ever took in our department for anything, whether it's 911 or 311, by a long shot. And their call volume was steady for about two months. It's really now just coming back to normal. And that's been impactful, not only to the employees, but the citizens. And we've got -- we've had some of our admin people help with the 311 calls to call back, and some other help from other departments. So they're doing a lot of good work, been doing a lot of good work. Unfortunately, 911 and 311 can't really work from home, so they've been working nonstop through the pandemic, wearing masks for 12-hour shifts, having to clean their workstations multiple times a day. And, you know, of course, not being able to -- when they're taking their breaks, they're taking them typically one person at a time, maybe two, because they can't, you know, we're trying to keep everybody safe. And we've done a really good job, and that's important to recognize, just my staff, at the job they've done, because there's been some 911 centers in our region who have been tremendously impacted by COVID. And with our staffing levels, we couldn't take the chance for any of that to happen. And some of the initiatives that are underway is our next-generation 911 deployment. And that moves the phone system from basically copper wire, what it is today, to fiber optics, and -- which we do run some fiber optics today, but it makes it more internet-based, for lack of better terminology. It allows us more functionality, be able to transfer calls to other jurisdictions. It allows us to get more data from the caller. Typically, 70% of our phone calls are from cell phones, and we don't get a lot of good data with that. So we have to ask the caller where they're at, and it takes time sometimes to figure out where they're at. If they can't speak to us and things like that, it could take up to 30 seconds before we get that technology today. This will help with that. It may also allow for more redundancy. It'll allow for some of our backup plans that you'll hear about later on in some of the IT CIPs, where we're working on a backup plan with IT to put some of our resources out of the area, in case we are hit with a major storm or some other issue. And also to vamp up -- ramp up our backup center that's over on Virginia Beach Boulevard. We still need some equipment over there to get things up to where we're more comfortable with them. We're going to be replacing our 911 phone system later this year, upgrading it, not replacing it, but upgrading. That'd be pretty substantial. We've been working with IT on an RFP to take care of that, RFQ. The CRM, which you've heard us talk about probably, for some of you, I think it's been going around in the city for over 15 years, trying to get this off the ground, but we were finally able to do it. That's going to go live at the end of this month, first part of May. We utilize portion of that for the vaccine registration, which, you know, we took thousands of registrations through that system already. I don't have the exact number, but I think it's well over 60,000 or 70,000 appointments were requested through that system originally, just for the COVID-19 pandemic. That's going to be an enterprise system. 311 is going to utilize that. We're hoping eventually in further phases, which we're going to be requesting some additional funding, which you'll hear about in the IT CIPs later today, to help grow that system, right? We've got enough funding to get it to phase one, but we know it's important for our city, not only for things like the pandemic, but, you know, to report potholes, to find out questions about resources the city has to offer, to put in service request tickets about anything the city does. And that's kind of the end goal, but it's also the end goal to be able to provide you, the council, with information to know, hey, what's going on in my area? What are some of the main things the citizens are contacting about? And so we're going to be able to provide that information to you a lot better than we have in the past. And lastly, working with EMS and FIRE, we're working on deploying a new emergency medical dispatch software. It's not been going as awesome as we'd like, just with, you know, sometimes, technology can't solve all your problems, but we're working hard at getting that right to be able to ensure that, you know, we're sending the best and most appropriate resources to calls. Call volume for EMS and FIRE calls, you know, they increase every year, and it puts a strain on resources. So we're hoping we can leverage the EMD system so our call takers can help identify what's truly going on with the patient who's calling, and we get the appropriate resources to the scene. And that's it that I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Henley?
Well, the turnover rate has always been a great concern in this group of people with the 911 folks. Salary, I think, certainly does need to be addressed. How do you think we're going to do in the market survey in comparison to other cities?
So I think if we do a market survey for nationwide, and we look at cities our size, we're probably not going to fare well, would be my guess. If we look in our region, we're probably the -- we're not the highest paid currently, but I think we're the second highest paid, and this was for some data from late last year. But the issue is, that I'd like for you guys to keep in mind, is we take 200,000 911 calls. Chesapeake 911 call center only takes about 100,000, and they make about $500 more a year roughly than we do. Not a lot of difference, but we're doing twice the workload they are, right? And then when you put in the fact of we take almost 300,000 non-emergency calls, so those aren't the 911 calls, those are the non-emergency public safety calls of, you know, my neighbor's dog's barking, so instead of calling 911, they call the 385,000 number. So that same 911 employee is working that call. So we take almost 500,000 non-emergency and 911 calls a year. And when you compare with what our region is, we're the biggest by far. I mean, you're all aware of that. But it's not really fair to say, hey, a 911 dispatcher in Virginia Beach makes a little bit less than Chesapeake, because we're not really comparing apples to apples. We're comparing the job, but not necessarily their duties. So I'm hopeful that when the market level survey goes out, that we look at other regions to see where they're at. And I realize there's cost of living and all that in there, but there definitely needs to be something done. I mean, there's some -- I don't know, I can't stand here to tell you, Ms. Henley, that if you were to say, hey, we'll give you a $10,000 a year pay raise, that that's going to make people stay, because money's not always everything. But I think there's things we could look at, benefits. There's a big push across the U.S. to get 911 dispatchers recognized as first responders, right? A lot of -- I mean, even the federal government classifies a 911 dispatcher today as a clerical job, but it's far, far more than that. I mean, our 911 dispatcher, just over the last year, with, you know, working with EMS and FIRE, provided CPR instructions that saved over 20 people's lives. They delivered babies over the phone before FIRE and EMS got on scene. And so we're a critical lifeline to that. I mean, and I don't, you know, even when you think about what happened on 531, our folks were on the phone with those people for 45 minutes, some of them, while they were waiting for police, you know, they were hidden. And just even the other day, when we had the incident at Lynn Haven Mall, that turned out to be nothing, there were citizens there who had locked themselves into places, and they're communicating with our employees, right, with our 911 call takers, and they take the brunt of that. And so one of the things I'd like to encourage the city to look at is pushing to get them recognized, not only at a city level, but at a state level. There's a lot of stuff going on to do that, and maybe looking at those benefits that come along with it. Because there are studies coming out now that there's post-traumatic stress impacts 911 call takers, because they answer every call that goes on in the city. They don't just answer police calls or FIRE calls or EMS. They answer all of them. And so there's oftentimes not a lot of closure with that. You know, it's comforting to say, hey, keep your door locked, the police officer will be right there to get you out, but staying there for 45 minutes and not knowing really what's going to happen, staying on the phone, is not a great feeling. And those call takers and dispatchers live with that. And so money's not everything. I think it's important, and I think if we could get the move to push and recognize those employees as first responders, we do a good job within our city, but looking at those benefits, looking at their retirement and things like that, I think is important. Fairfax County has an amazing retirement system for their 911 dispatchers. It's very, very equivalent to police and FIRE, but they're not in VRS. But those are things that I think, you know, as a city, we should look at as well.
Well, you've done a good job of educating me. I had no idea that they were just considered clerical, and I hope the city manager will take some of your recommendations and explore them for us, because they're critical to making everything work. And we certainly need to have them appropriately recognized and compensated and treated fairly. So you've done a good job, and thank you for all the work you've done for us, and good luck, and come back anytime.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Henley is spot on. Anyone else? I just want to thank you, I believe on behalf of the council, for the work that you do. You are definitely part of the public safety system that, you know, we have a great system right here with our police, FIRE, EMS, the sheriff's office. But once again, you are an integral part of it. You're the ones that handle things responsibly and professionally and get things rolling. And we truly appreciate your challenges, and once again, thanks again to you personally for your time, effort, and commitment to help make Virginia Beach the great city it is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. And again, I appreciate all the support you're doing. Jada Lee, who's been by my side the entire time, she'll be, as you know, the acting director going forward. And I appreciate all the support that you've given, like I said before, our department. Appreciate your support with the budget. And then April 15th, National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week is the week of April 15th. So if you have time, you know, we're still operating under COVID guidelines, but we'll make, well, I won't be here, but I'll make sure that you have, make provisions for you guys to come and see the work that they do, because that is very, very appreciative. They certainly appreciate that. The city manager, in the time that he's been here, has shown a great interest in 911, and I'm glad, I appreciate you guys bringing him on to help, because he does have a true understanding of what we do, and there's no doubt that he'll be supportive of the organization. So again, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Chief Brazel from EMS will present on his FY22 budget and also the challenges faced by his department.
It's my pleasure to be here again as your EMS chief, and I also appreciate the opportunity at any time to talk about EMS and our rescue squads. As the manager indicated, I'm going to take a little bit different tack. We're going to talk about the current budget, but then frame that for some challenges going into out years. So, oh, there's a slide here. So just looking at our organization, we are a big department. We, the career FTE number is somewhat deceptive, in that 10 of those actually are 50 part-time seasonal guards during the summer months down in Sandbridge. And also, we have, our volunteer workforce is putting in the equivalent of 82 full-time employees. So that's a huge contribution. In terms of our budget, our biggest expenses are in response and operations. We also, about 18% of our budget goes out towards lifeguards, including $1.9 million for the resort contract. That's essentially a pass-through that we manage. This slide breaks it down by divisions, but it's, each line always varies at the end, because people move from division to division, get promoted or whatnot. The key takeaways here are, number one, going back to lifeguard contract, we have a 3% escalation clause, and EMS has to absorb that every year. We're in year three of a five-year contract. Our bottom line is actually lower. Our budget's gone down from previous years, but that's mainly due to some changes in risk management and other internal services charges, not as a result of any operational cuts. So based on this budget, we project our cost per call, about $223, and that for a transport to the hospital, about $305. Those numbers are actually lower than most metropolitan areas, obviously, because we have a large volunteer workforce staffing the ambulances. And also, we avoid what I call the $1 million subsidy, that's the cost of ambulances, uniforms, and supplies, and things that the rescue squads pay for, that we, as a city, do not have to pay for. I highlight the $305 charge for transport as a bragging point, but also to say that, you know, while we don't charge for ambulance and services, transports are not free. We're adding seven Burton Station medics to the Burton Station facility. This is going to be the second installment of five that were hired in 2020. This is going to be the first time in the city's history that we've added a station, and we've also, at the same time, added resources for EMS. Typically, we add a station, it's like, oh, find some volunteers to staff it, which is not really realistic when you consider it takes 50 additional volunteers to recruit, train, and retain to staff one extra ambulance. So this approach treats EMS just like every other department or agency that adds demand or adds facilities, and we really thank you for that change. Now, this is not going to be a 100% paid station, if you will. We will continue to meld career and volunteer resources at Burton Station, just like we do in the rest of the city. Obviously, talking about initiatives, our focus lately has been on vaccinations. We've got over 25% of my workforce, both the staff and medics, as well as a lot of volunteers, are working full-time on the vaccination project. Happy to say that we're going to hit over 100,000 shots as of today. So if you haven't seen the operation downstairs, it's pretty exciting. And I'm going to give you a more detailed briefing, along with emergency management, next week on vaccinations. We've got a major project underway, dealing with response to mental health emergencies, working with police department and human services, and we think this is going to provide a much better level of care to these patients, as well as free up police and hospital resources. And of course, we're still operating in the middle of a pandemic. We have safely and seamlessly transported over 1,400 COVID patients to date, and I'm very proud of that. But we have taken some hits. The State Office of EMS has severely restricted the number of classes and the size of classes that we can have for new members, which will have downstream effects. I've talked to you before about how, because of our high turnover and our volunteer workforce, that EMS is somewhat like a bathtub with a drain always flowing. And so it's our job to continue to put the same flow, or hopefully better, to meet that outflow. Well, as you can see with a cutback on the number of classes, we're going to have some issues. And so we have some real challenges ahead. Rising costs. Obviously, the costs of equipment, particularly for our rescue squads, the capital equipment like stretchers and ambulances are going up. Meanwhile, some of the traditional sources of revenue they rely on, like grants, are actually declining. And of course, more calls means more expenses for everybody. This budget keeps EMS whole, thank you, but some of our rescue squads are facing some challenges. The $2 million ambulance grant you gave last year was a tremendous boon to them, and they're very grateful those ambulances are on order, or most of them are. But a couple squads wouldn't have been able to order ambulances without that assistance. Now, our call volumes continue to rise, like every other demand for services. With us, it's an aging population, which actually increases the complexity of the calls, and then, of course, the demand for personnel training and equipment. Now, in terms of recruiting and retention, I'm sure you can imagine it's challenging to recruit volunteer medical personnel during a pandemic. We've seen some numbers there, some challenges bringing people in. And also, our incumbent workforce has had challenges, whether it's employers that have banned people from volunteering, or families that have kept them from volunteering, or their personal health or health of their families. So this has been an issue. And then add to that, our volunteers, we're highly social, and a lot of the morale and retention comes through activities that are the squad sponsor or the city sponsors, whether it's banquet or our night at the aquarium, or cookouts. All of those things have been curtailed. So when you take a lot of the fun out of serving, it means that your outflow is going to increase. Now, we hope, we hope a lot of this will get better after COVID, life after COVID, but I believe that the EMS workforce will be somewhat like one of those long-haul patients suffering from COVID for some time to come. So let's talk about staffing and demand. These red bars indicate our call volume, and as to be expected, we've increased over the years. Last year, we hit about 46,000 calls. Our goal has been, for a long time, one ambulance for every 3,000 calls. Now, there's no mandate to that, but the professional experts look at response times and demand and community expectation, and that's a comfortable number. And so if you go back to 2011, we were providing just under 12 ambulances with a stretch goal of 13, so that's pretty good. But in the ensuing years, that yellow line is our staffing. We've remained flat, and we, at this point, could have a goal of 15 ambulances, and we're still at that 12 level. So to address that delta would take 150 more volunteers or 32 additional career staff to reach your optimal levels, or better yet, a combination of the career and volunteer. Now, this isn't doom and gloom. The chief staffing is a huge, a huge success for our workforce and our volunteers. It's a real credit to them, because as we've talked about, there's been a steady decline in volunteerism around the country, and so we've kept up over these years with a decline. And as we know, in 2004, the city did create the small career medic workforce with the dual role of providing ALS via the zone cars, but also augmenting the rescue squads when they needed a little help. And the design level's about 10% that we would help the rescue squad staffing. But unfortunately, the decline in volunteering and the increasing in call volumes means that more career staff is being assigned to the ambulances, which is okay. We designed it to do that. But as the augmentation has increased, we have not increased the career workforce. In the decade before we started to talk about Burton Station last year, we have added 10 medics. 10 medics in 10 years. So again, a tremendous tribute to what the incumbent workforce has been able to do. Unfortunately, our augmentation now during the day is about 86%, I'm sorry, augmentation is about 16% of the time there's career staff on ambulances, and night, it's over 25%. And as we move those medics from the zone cars, the remaining medics on the zone cars, their workload, of course, the sponsorship goes up. Now, while this presentation is about the current year, again, I want to talk about resourcing the future. I'd hope to have that as part of a broader conversation earlier, but we're going to wrap it in here today. I think in the past, there'd been sort of a reluctance to talk about staffing or needs for additional staffing, as it might be a reflection on some failing of the volunteers, or the volunteers might not want the extra help. And I've been, I've been a part of that reluctance for the years, and I can say, over the years, I've not made a strong enough case to my bosses. But today, as the number-one champion for the patients, and as the number-one champion for our volunteer rescue squad system, I'm here to tell you we need to change the narrative. Our volunteer rescue squads have done amazing work and continue to do amazing work. We simply have reached the point of capacity. And I'd hope, again, I'd hope to talk about this as part of a larger dialogue, but COVID has really accelerated the need to talk about this. Okay, so where I'm really going here, so this is, the last slide was average staffing. This is actual achievement in the last three years. The green bar is when, we have a goal, a comfort goal, of 14 ambulances during the day, 12 at night, and that indicates a really comfortable, plenty of downtime between calls, you're not racing around, response times are good. Yellow, you're okay, we're keeping up with the demand, no problem, it's just you're busier and maybe not as much downtime. And then when you get into red, that is the bare minimum. That is the baseline where we won't go below. We'll bring in people in overtime to get there if need be, and that is calling call to call to call, getting chased out of the hospital, call to call, no downtime. Now, let me be clear, the baseline, we are still providing services. We are still answering the calls, we're meeting the demand for any care. It's just we are working our people really hard to get there. And so as you see, the greens have declined and the reds have increased. And as the reds increase, particularly at night, this can become a spiral, and we've seen this before. Some of you that have been here, you know, 20 years ago or 15 years ago. As a volunteer doesn't get downtime at night to rest before they have to go to their regular job, then it becomes a challenge balancing their work-life and their home life, and then your takeaway, the fun out of it, it just gets to be difficult. Then you add the career medic who's working 12-hour shifts, back-to-back, three, or the ones that have been forced to come in overtime, and we're utilizing them at a pace far in excess of any recommendation from national standards. And their health and morale is starting to suffer. So to highlight how COVID has come into play, there's nobody's fault here. That you see here, the green is the number of certified people we've got running on the ambulances and the volunteers, and we've done very well, not just a 6% decline since 2016, and we can all be proud of that. But the red line is your number of applicants, and that's your inflow, and you see a 42% drop. Now, that's COVID, it's COVID, and that's going to come back, but as I told you, it takes a year to recruit, train, and qualify new volunteers. So even once we plug the COVID hole in the bathtub, we're going to be feeling these effects for some time to come. And just another example, this is a, a course of a year, how many people come and get qualified versus how many leave. You want your greens on the left to be taller than the reds on the right, because that shows growth. And of course, you see, we're not, we're not growing where we want to be. So I've shown you EMS staffing's been flat for the last decade, and we're experiencing some challenges, particularly at night. This is not a failure of our volunteer rescue squads or our career medics. I'm as confident as them today as I was when I became chief five years ago, and you should be confident in them. It's simply a matter of capacity. We hope to see some turnaround after COVID, but simply, again, plugging the COVID hole isn't going to be enough. We've got to make some structural changes to ensure the level of service to the community. The new Burton Station medics are going to be a welcome addition, thank you so much. While we can't deploy them for another eight months, they will eventually be used at essentially half an ambulance crew daily, but they're just part of the equation. The current model of resourcing needs to be looked at. I'm not advocating abandoning our rescue squads by any stretch of the imagination. In fact, on the contrary, I believe we need to continue or increase our investment in their recruiting, marketing, and resourcing the squads. But sooner rather than later, we've got to look at the career team to address staffing needs beyond the capacity of our volunteer system. And that's going to allow us to meet the needs today and far into the future. So with that, again, we're doing well, but we're working our people really hard, and we need to make some adjustments. So I look forward to working with you for 2022 in the future. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, Ed, thanks for the great presentation and the great work you folks do 24/7.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I just say an extra thank you to Mr. Brazel for the extra help that he's been in getting our seniors their appointments. We've had sort of a tag team going. He went above and beyond, and we've got a lot of folks who appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's really, there's a whole gang from my office and Health and 311 have really been, I think we've taken care of about 50 of those folks so far.
I think I lost track after 50, but thank you so much.
And Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I would, I would just tag on to that as well. Just watching the organization that frankly you have spearheaded downstairs is absolutely phenomenal, I think, especially in context of what's going on in the rest of the Commonwealth. We are certainly leading the Commonwealth, if not the nation, in the way this is being done. I saw somebody today who, I was dropping something off to get it repaired, and the guy told me, he said, you know, I was just down at your convention center getting my second shot, and he said, you know, he said, the city can never do anything right, he said, but they did this very well. So I thought that was, that was a really, it was a really good compliment.
Well, thanks, sir, I appreciate it. It's kind of, I have the advantage disadvantage of sometimes being the face of this, but we've got a huge team from EMS, FIRE, emergency management, police, a lot of other players that are nonstop working to make it happen downstairs, and so thank you for your comments.
Okay, thanks again, Ed.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Chief Hutchison from the Fire Department is going to come and give his presentation regarding the FY22 budget and also the opportunities and challenges facing the Fire Department.
Welcome, Chief Hutch.
Afternoon, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for having us here. I know it's a long day for y'all. First off, let me get this slide. Here we go. Just hitting a couple things out of the gate is, as you know, we're 555 FTEs, 500 of us are firefighters, and the other 55 are admin staff. They don't always get the shout-out, they deserve the admin staff, but they are critical to us moving forward. They do a lot of the support functions. Four divisions and a total budget of a little over $60 million. $58 million of that is from the city, and $2 million of it, roughly $1 million, $8 million something, is from the USAR FEMA team for our USAR team. And that's, I believe, the longest-running grant the city has had now for some time. As you know very well, more than me, that most budgets are 92% personnel, and that's how ours breaks down. I'm not going to belabor that with you, it's what it is. Just the same chart that we all have, breaking it down by the divisions, comes out to the same numbers, just about $60 million. These are the slides that I really want to get into. First and foremost, you know, how do we say thank you for getting us Burton Station, the fire station there? That's a great accomplishment that you all have supported and that we've made happen. Not only, not only the building, the two apparatus, and of course, the people, as Chief Brazel was saying, that's quite the give from y'all, and we really appreciate it. One thing that I want to take a minute, though, is, at the time, he was Vice Mayor Jones, now Councilman Jones, retired city manager Dave Hanson, retired deputy city manager, and I heard he was the fire chief at one point, DCM Cover, and then my deputy chief of ops Vance Cooper. Y'all saw the opportunity with that project to put a fire station in, in an area that was underserved. That station's going to probably run 4,000 calls a year, y'all. That's a, that's a big deal. And then y'all saw the need for it and made it happen, and it's greatly appreciated, sir. Obviously, it didn't happen in a vacuum, everybody supported it, and we all made it happen, and through COVID, we took the little break, but then we got it right back started as soon as we could. Tom Nichols informed me last night, the notice to proceed has been let, and that should be happening at any time. And we're looking forward to it, Mr. Jones. So next would be the EMS instructor from a part-time to a full-time. As y'all know, we have over 500, we're all EMT, all 500 of us. 150 of us are ALS. April, who's handling that for us, she works very closely with her EMS counterpart. She makes sure that all of our CEUs are kept up to date, and then all of the training. She was just teaching the recruit school when I left the training center. was just teaching the recruit school when I left the training center an hour ago, she was, she was instructing the new recruit school. So very much needed position to get to a full-time position, and we're glad that y'all saw the need as well. Next is the captain at the resource management. Talk about something that was needed. That, we have not added any personnel to that, to the resource management since we were 150-person department, and like I said, now we're at 500. And as you'll hear here in a minute, they, they are instrument, have been, it's person and place position has been instrumental from the very beginning of COVID to, to, to assist the, not only the Fire Department, but all of the emergency response system as well as the rest of the city. So we, we very much appreciate that. Next, I want to, I want to just use a sports analogy, actually Chief Cooper came up with it, is it, it's a utility player, used a lot in baseball. These investments that I'm talking about, that y'all are making and that you have made over the course of the years for the Fire Department has allowed us to become the cities, what we feel the city's utility players, and we're grateful for that. Whether it's bucking and gutting in the plaza after the last hurricanes, you know, we, we did that with our recruits, whether it's the high-water vehicles, picking up kids and taking them, taking them from the bus to their houses or in the, the north end, getting them out of their cars that were stranded, we're the ones that staff them and, and make that happen for y'all. The VBIMT, the Incident Management Team, the Fire Department is the backbone of that for the EOC. We, we handle multiple positions in there. Then that's led to the IMT, the Incident Management Team, not only for the region, but for the, for the Commonwealth and the nation, they've deployed all the way to Florida for their hurricanes. Obviously, y'all are very proud of, and we, we appreciate the support for the USAR team, Virginia Task Force Two. Many of you have been there and seen them come out, leave, and come back, and we appreciate that support. Our Fire and Life Safety Division is second to none in the Commonwealth and known across the nation. They help with all our children, one of our most important aspects of one of our most, the ones that can get hurt the most, and then our elderly, the two, the two components that they work most with. So with all of that, when you put it all in the, in the mixer together, we're an all-hazard department. You know, it's not just the bells and whistles going off anymore, there's a lot more to us. SWAT medics in Norfolk, we, we supply all the SWAT medics for the FBI out of Norfolk. There's a lot of different positions we handle. And then to boot, according to Donna Mickley's empirical data, we pulled off something as a department that no other city department has done, and that's reached 100% citizen satisfaction on a citizen survey. So we're quite proud of that, and I did let DCM Cover that he'd never accomplish that. So happy for that. It, it just goes to show you, though, y'all, y'all know this, is your men and women that make up your Fire Department are dedicated, they love what they're doing, high empathy skills, they treat everybody the same, doesn't matter where they live or where they're coming from, visitors or tourists, it, it doesn't matter whether they live here, we, we do the very best we can, and that shows, it just does. We also had set a goal a couple of years ago, a few years ago, about having one ALS firefighter on every frontline engine. I'm happy to say that when we opened Burton Station after that rookie school, we should be able to have every frontline engine with ALS personnel on it. A lot of the latter is due in the rescue as well, but getting that mix of right people takes a little bit more than you would think, but we're very close to getting it, to getting it accomplished, and proud of that. Next is what I would call is all things COVID. When the pandemic first started, as y'all know, the Fire Department was tasked with assisting the Emergency Management Department with the Virginia Beach IMT and the EOC. We did logistics, plans, and incident command. Our resource management staff that I'm just talking about, where you've added the captain, did the first pod. They did, we did all the purchasing for the Fire Department, which then extended to the EMS Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the Police, and the Police Department, as far as for the, and then took over for the entire city. As y'all remember, these masks, especially the N95s, for several months were not there. We worked with Scott Kalesh out of Occupational Safety and, and got a truckload at one time, it was over a million masks. That was a big deal, and it gave us the, the supply that we needed to, to be able to get through this. So integral in, in making it happen. As Chief Browsell was just talking about, once we set up the vaccination center, the Fire Department has personnel and the command staff assisting him. We have a logistics section chief, is Chief Amy Valdez. The liaison chief to all the outreach pods is District Chief Lozinski. The plan section chief is shared between BC Lorna Trent and Brigade Chief Joe Corley, again, working seamlessly as we always do with EMS. It's really a partner relationship. We supply, we supply personnel to the pharmacy, the floor staff, and vaccinators. From our newest firefighter, and I would like to say to both deputies sitting back here, they were both given shots yesterday. I think that's to be commended. So we, we represent in all parts of that, of that procedure. We have over 50 firefighters dedicated every day to the, to the fight. The city manager asked us, we're not going to fail at this, and, and we're not. I, I just don't believe it. We, we really are putting our best foot forward every day. Also, with some gentle nudging, we were over 75% vaccinated as a department. I can tell you, across the region, the Commonwealth and the nation, most Fire Departments are not even at 50%, so we've done very well there as well. Next is the market salary analysis. As you know, I, we have a very well-educated department when it comes to pay and benefits. So for just a minute, I want you to take an imaginary ride on a fire engine with me. It'd probably be the most fun y'all have had today. You're the officer in the cab in your home district, pick a fire station in your home district, and you're riding in the cab and I'm driving. That's probably not your best bet either, but that's what we got right now. We pull out of the station and we turn right. We arrive at a major accident with injuries at Princess Anne in Lynn Haven with multiple patients, some entrapped in their vehicles. The driver parks to block traffic along with our brothers and sisters in PD. We start building that box around the accident to make sure there's no other accidents. The driver then pulls, pulls an attack line so that if a fire breaks out, they can put it out. We extricate, we extricate the patients out of the car, and then we ride with Ed's folks to the hospital to treat them for any ALS injuries. Again, along with EMS. Just as you, just as you clear and back into the station from the hospital, we get punched out for a structural fire. This time, we're turning, turning left out of the station. We put our turnout gear on, you look up, you see a large column of black smoke. Once on scene, you pull an attack line, you search for any victims to include their pets, as we know, that's very important. The mask that we have, the non-rebreather mask that we use for our pets, we're one of the first regions, definitely in the region and in the state, to have such masks afforded to us. I believe it was Chief Browsell's group that got them to begin with for us, so it was greatly appreciated. We extinguish the fire and assist the families with getting Red Cross if needed. I ask you just to take this little ride with us for just this minute so that you could share in what we feel sometimes, I know it was very brief. But on the first call, we're one of only two departments that can handle such a call, ourselves and EMS. But on the second call, we are only, we are the only department that can handle that for you, and with some pride, I say we do that quite well. These are two very different skill sets being utilized by the same firefighter. On one hand, they're doing EMS skills, on another, doing firefighting skills. There's really no mix in the middle of those two skills. So it's two very different subsets of jobs that we have, and they do it quite well. So I'm asking you, when the results of the survey come out, that you keep these two calls in your mind and the dedication your firefighters have to serving our citizens and visitors every day. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions for the chief? Ms. Henley?
Well, just one more thank you for going above and beyond. And our Fire Department does, has to do everything, and, and I think you've portrayed that very well, and, and your training has to be good, and I hope you make sure that you're asking us to provide you with whatever you need to keep that training at the sharpest point. But, you know, we've got a challenge down at Blackwater, and everybody thinks, okay, Blackwater's way down there, never gets very many calls, thank goodness, but it's double-staffed now on weekends while the Blackwater Bridge is closed. And I hope they never need to have, to have a call, but they've got, they're there just in case, and I really appreciate y'all being willing to provide that. I know it's above and beyond for both Creeds and Blackwater, but we have to be prepared for anything, and I really appreciate it.
No, yes, ma'am, that's exactly how it works, and if we weren't, is when we'd have something down there. And I just would like to say, too, we, we normally do put on more mature firefighters down there, but that's because they're going to be operating by themselves at first, by, you know, by themselves, and they need to be more experienced, so it, it pays off.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Belurci.
Chief, it's good to see you, and thank you for your wonderful presentation. You know, I just want to take a minute to express my appreciation as well, but also, of course, you know, but I think a lot of people, other, a lot of other people don't know, that you and I had a chance to work together long before I became a member of this council in helping to connect the Fire Department with underserved constituencies. And I, I think that in addition to the professional services that you and your team provide and have historically provided, and I want to compliment you on, I think, what you mentioned was 100% satisfaction survey, which is an extraordinary result, that you've really been a, what I consider to be a visionary leader in enhancing those services by better connecting them to our community. And I, I would extend that as well to the men and women who work for you and, and your department. I think in addition to providing all of those technical and very, very specialized, trained skills, you also do it with a sense of compassion and with an openness that, that is able to better connect those needed services to everyone in our community in a more full and complete way, and I'm really grateful for that leadership that you've displayed and continue to, and for the men and women who work for you, thank you.
Thank you so much, sir, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Well, chief, let me just say that Virginia Beach is a city of heroes. You know, I've been to a number of recognitions, awards for your, your men and women who put their lives at risk and save other people's lives. And if you look at our total package of public safety professionals we have, we are a city of heroes and we are a safe city. Thank you and God bless you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Police Chief Nutigate is going to come and present on the fiscal year 20 budget and also the opportunities and challenges facing the Police Department.
Mr. Mayor, before we get started, will we receive a copy of that brief while it proceeds or after it's over? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for the opportunity to come back in and discuss the Police Department's FY2022 budget. I do apologize for not having the documents, but as you can see, we've added quite a bit to this over the last couple of days, and we were making changes up until just a little bit ago, so I do apologize for that. Your Police Department is comprised of 1,042 FTEs, that's approximately 800 sworn, approximately 200 professional staff that truly make the Police Department function. So just like the chiefs before me, we could not do it without our professional staff, and I do believe that we, we do have to acknowledge them. The Police Department's divided into four bureaus, Admin, Support, Investigations, and Uniform Patrol with a total budget of $106 million. The largest portion dedicated to Uniform Patrol are what we call our Ops Division. And what I really want to get into are the budget highlights. In this budget, there are six vacant sworn positions that are going to be eliminated, but I think we know that right now, that is not a priority or a major concern for the Police Department as we cannot fill the vacancies that we have. So as we have discussed, we have 99 current vacancies. That does not factor in the 32 recruits who are due to graduate to Phase Two in July, and really, they do not become operational and solo-dependent until probably late this year. So those 32, we really cannot depend on and look in our staffing configuration. We did start the academy with 42, we have lost six in the last few weeks to various reasons. There were four laterals that we were able to hire from the region, those individuals went through an abbreviated academy, and they're now, now out patrolling the precincts of Virginia Beach. There are at least five pending retirements or departures that I am aware of, and one of the things that we have found that is concerning, troubling, that we have already surpassed our average yearly attrition, looking at the last six years at this point, and we have three months left into the fiscal year with at least five to go, and ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of rumblings about additional folks departing this agency. One of the things that we did have to add, that we're asking to add as a public safety data analyst, this is an unfunded mandate that came from the state to collect the traffic stop and non-consensual stop data. So we will need to move forward where we're going to have to collect 15 data points, clean that data, and make sure it gets forwarded to the Virginia State Police for their accumulated efforts. The one thing that we will be doing now that we are collecting the data, just for reference, the Police Department was not collecting this data up until it was mandated this past July, so we only have a very limited data set of the previous six months, so we're trying to take a look at what that looks like now, but it is a, a very limited set, and we're going to need a more comprehensive data collection to really get an understanding of what that looks like from a PD and community perspective. Body-worn cameras, I think we all know that when the original program, which I believe started in 2018, and is still going through several phases of rollout, was only designed to outfit the 450 police officers or master police officers that patrol this city. It was not designed to provide them to supervisors, command staff, administrative personnel, and I think we saw this with Lynn Haven, that we had a sergeant that did not have a body camera. We would have liked to have had that body camera to get the, the facts and circumstances that led up to that incident. If we have a detective in the Detective Bureau right now, and they decide to go put on a blue uniform and go work in off-duty detail at Harris, Teeter, or Kroger, they do not have a body camera. So that's why we have asked council for the funding to expand it with approximately 360 additional cameras, licensing, and cloud storage so that every sworn Virginia Beach police officer will have a camera available when they are in a operational capacity. One of the things that we're very happy to see move forward, a lot of work, we give credit to the team, we give credit to Interim Chief Zakara, I know he worked very hard to bring the cadet program proposal before this body. This is really that wraparound that when our young folks graduate from high school and before they're eligible to take that police academy entrance, that we can wrap our arms around them and keep them from engaging in maybe some activity that would preclude them from getting hired, or what I find much more troubling is they get hired by the fire service. So in between that time period, we really got to wrap our arms around them and help them understand that they do want to be Virginia Beach police officers, and there is a great learning opportunity, because what we're finding with some of our young folks in the academy is they're coming in the doors, we're hiring them, they really don't know what those expectations are, and they find out that the police service is not for them. So we're really hoping that this stopgap, this cadet program, will help us put our arms around some of our folks, keep them out of trouble, allow them to really understand what the Police Department is about, expose them to different opportunities, and we do believe that it will help with some of our diversity recruiting if we do this right. Salary study. This was an internal salary study that I commissioned shortly after getting here. I think it part lays right into the city manager's market salary survey that he is putting together. What we know from looking at it right now is a local comparison among the seven sister cities. We make approximately $2,600 more starting salary. And, you know, we do thank the council because one of the reasons that we are in the position that we are currently is because you did fund the PDP for us, so we're very appreciative of that. However, times are changing. I think probably we've all seen that Norfolk is, or Norfolk is proposing an 8% pay raise for all their officers, which would make them the highest paid in the hand. for all their officers, which would make them the highest paid in the Hampton Roads region. And we're afraid of what that would do for our recruiting initiatives if we have to compete with Norfolk on that level. Statewide, we'd looked at 13 of the larger cities comparable to the Virginia Beach. On average, we make $6,800 less starting salary. Then a national comparison, we looked at similar sized cities around that 450, you know, 400 to 600,000 population mark, just to get an idea of where we are. The cities are listed below. We are ninth lowest starting salary out of 10, with only Raleigh, North Carolina having a lower starting salary than Virginia Beach. One of the things that we have been looking at, and I know I've had a lot of great conversations with members of this body, is looking at what we can do to overcome some of those obstacles. We are definitely looking at what we could do for hiring incentives, paying for moving expenses. It's very easy for Virginia State certified officers. If they're already certified, there's no issues. We can put them through a short abbreviated academy and they're out patrolling Virginia Beach in short order. Where we're going to struggle is we really have to think globally. We've got to think nationally because there is a finite number of officers that we're going to pull from in the Hampton Roads region. And right now, before we can tell an out-of-state officer what will require them to be a Virginia Beach officer, we have to extend them a conditional hire offer before DCJS will even evaluate their transcripts for out-of-state and tell us what that would look like. Would it be a six-week academy? Would it be a 12-week academy? Would they have to go through the whole thing? We just don't know until we would be at the point that we would have to extend them a conditional offer or hire. And most candidates out there are not going to wait. They're going to go to a department where they know what that transition period is going to be, they know what that salary is going to be, and I think that's where we are struggling. One of the areas where we do see some opportunity is looking at our data. We have a not insignificant number of individuals that are leaving right before the five-year mark where they're vested in the VRS system. So there is a possibility for us to look at some type of retention bonus right before that five-year mark to try to encourage them to stay with the Virginia Beach PD before they move on to some other type of department. One of the things that the police department was asked to do in light of my last presentation was to come forth with some considerations on how we would use technology as a force multiplier. You know, being 100 sworn vacants, 100 sworn positions vacant, it is going to take us quite some time to overcome where we are in regards to FTE positions. Talking with staff, that could be anywhere from two to three years depending on how well our hiring recruiting ability goes. So what I bring before the council are some suggestions in using technology as a stopgap to help us address some of the increase in violence that we're seeing. We have a recommendation to install 42 additional cameras at priority locations throughout the resort area. This would augment the 50 that are currently there, and we believe it would provide us coverage from the boardwalk in Atlantic, from Rudy Inlet all the way to Fortieth Street. It would also give us some enhanced coverage area along Pacific Avenue so we can help manage those traffic considerations. The cost, 1.2 million as there is already 300,000 currently budgeted for a much more smaller camera expansion. Next would be gunshot detection. I am very familiar with this. I've seen it through three iterations in my previous employer. When I left Ohio, we had 13 square miles of coverage. And what I can tell you is the technology has been much refined over the years. What this allows us to do is when gunfire is detected, it will triangulate it, it will send that back to Newark, California, they put it through a machine algorithm, they put human ears on it to confirm that it is gunfire, and then approximately 45 seconds later, it will hit the MDC in the car, it will hit our smartphone, and it will triangulate that gunfire within 25 meters. That will trigger an immediate response by the officers to that location. And where this is very important is the national average for places that have gunshot detection, 12 to 20% of all gunfire activations have a 911 call. So in Cincinnati, we knew that only 15.8% of the ShotSpotter activations triggered a 911 call. So 84% of the time that there was gunfire in Cincinnati, we did not get a call. So one, it's very hard to develop a strategic gun violence reduction program when you only have 15.8% of the data of where gunfire is occurring. Another issue is community engagement. We know, and what we saw from Ohio, is there are many reasons why the community doesn't call it in. One is because they believe the department, the police, you know, they become apathetic, they believe the police department doesn't care. And I could see why they would believe that because if the police are only showing up 15.8% of the time that you have gunfire in your community, you're going to believe that the police don't care, that the police do not prioritize addressing gun violence in your community. What I can tell you is when you employ the technology, we respond 100% of the time. Now the community understands why we're there. There was a double-digit increase in a customer survey satisfaction after we deployed the technology. So it's not only addressing the crime, but it's building trust in the community when you deploy it. So it is not inexpensive. It is $70,000 per square mile. It is data-driven. We are currently working with the vendor right now to do an analysis of locations that have a historical deed based on homicides, person shot, shots fired, gun calls. But we do believe, and I believe based on the data that I've seen, that obviously the resort area would rise to the top when we start looking at that data. So right now, we believe three square miles of coverage for the oceanfront area. Initial cost would be $240,000, and then it would be $210,000 annually each year. And just brainstorming with staff, we believe that there are probably at least four other locations that would require approximately five-plus miles of coverage that would also rise to our consideration. Altogether, that would be an additional $400,000 if we would choose to fund that. License plate reader technology. I know it, it's been controversial down here in Virginia Beach as of right now. I believe that it is something that we can pursue unless the general assembly changes that. It is an outstanding tool for follow-up investigations. License plate readers help us solve crime. They help us solve shootings, they help us solve homicides. They are a great reactive piece to put vehicles at crime scene locations when our detectives are doing follow-up investigations. They allow us to run partial license plates. So if you are the victim of a crime and you have a partial license plate, we can run that partial license plate and get a list of vehicles through the ALPR database. They also allow us to be proactive if set up correctly, that they will alert officers to stolen cars, they will alert officers to warrants associated with that car. We envision that we would like to put the technology at the oceanfront as well as other areas in both a static and mobile configuration so that locations with a history of historic violence, we will have them there to always capture the license plates as well as put them on mobile vehicles in the precincts so that we have that from both a mobile and static configuration. And when we're talking about technology, we have all these different pieces. We have to have somewhere to bring them all under one roof. And what we really need in Virginia Beach is a true 24/7 operations hub. Many departments call it a real-time crime center. Almost every large police department has this embedded within its facility, and what this would be is a data-driven command center where we would be able to more proactively monitor the cameras. What we're asking for in expansion, it would allow us to monitor social media for threats to persons, public property. We would monitor and coordinate our gunshot detection systems, our license plate reader technology, our social network analysis, and I believe Councilmember Wilson asked about it in my last presentation, is, you know, tell me about the background of some of these individuals involved in some of this activity. That would be our social network analysis where we're looking at those first and second degree associations to find out whether this is truly an individual engaged in just crime or if it is group or gang involvement. It would allow us to coordinate with NIBIN results, which is the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. What that will allow us to do, and we're pursuing that technology right now as well, it's a program managed by the ATF that if we recover a gun, we recover shell casings, that all gets test-fired. Those shell casings get entered into a machine, it goes into NIBIN, and then it links all that together. So if we stop an individual and he has a firearm on them, we test-fire that firearm. Once we enter that into NIBIN, they will tell us if shell casings from other previous crimes are the result of that gun. So now we may stop you on a traffic stop, and that's all we have. You're a convicted felon, we find out that you're armed, we make an arrest, we recover that gun. I've seen it where one gun can link back to seven, eight, nine separate shooting incidents, and that is one great investigative lead for us to go back and start solving cases and shootings. Typically, a real-time crime center would be staffed with half sworn personnel and half civilian or professional intelligence analyst. I think we all know that we do not have the sworn personnel to dedicate to this task. So to stand this up, if we decide to move forward, we would ask for approximately nine FTEs, and then we would try to augment with our light-duty personnel for the sworn component. Technology and build-out, 1.64 million with a total estimated cost for this to become the true operations hub and the pulse of the city, 2.25 million. One of the things that we are doing right now is we have two newly assigned resort liaison officers, so they are working to conduct a crime prevention through environmental design analysis down at the resort area with a focus on lighting, parking concerns, and then work with the various city entities to address those locations that are attracting crime and disorder to the oceanfront. I know we were asked about in the last presentation, I briefly covered some of these, some of our recent organizational changes. Historically, the Beach PD has had a centralized community engagement model. We've had six or seven officers tasked with providing direct community engagement for 450,000 residents, so what we have done is decentralized that. Now each precinct has an assigned community liaison officer that reports directly to that captain and that community in that precinct. The second precinct, as I mentioned, is we have assigned two resort liaison officers dedicated strictly to oceanfront community engagement initiatives. We've added a sergeant to our special events unit. Historically, that was also decentralized, so if there was a large-scale event and it was going to occur in the third, that would get kicked out to the command of the third to plan that and resort with the city administration. Now we have a centralized unit, so we will have some consistency and oversight to ensure the safety of events, and we're looking at it from a coordinated approach. And we're also in the process of hiring two civilian planners, so that unit right now in its configuration will be a lieutenant, a sergeant, and two civilian planners. And then the precinct COP squads, which historically we've asked them to be the jack of all trades and to take on any and all tasks in the precincts that need to be addressed, we have refocused, we've retasked them into crime suppression squads with a specific emphasis on gun violence and addressing those hotspot locations. A prime example, Saturday, while many of us were at the second precinct, Second Precinct Crime Suppression got information that there were four individuals that were very known to the police and that all four of them were armed with handguns. They were able to coordinate, affect a traffic stop, take all four into custody, recover those four handguns that they had intelligence that they had. One of them was a 17-year-old individual. I believe the other ones had outstanding warrants as well as ongoing criminal cases. So we talk about disrupting the shooting cycle. That's exactly what the crime suppression squads moving forward are being tasked to address, is interrupting that gun violence and preventing that next shooting in Virginia Beach. Some future, future thoughts on restructuring and what I think would be best for this police department and be best for this city moving forward is definitely an expansion of our community engagement initiatives. In a perfect world, all police officers, all Virginia Beach police officers are community engagement officers. That is the philosophy under which we operate. Realistically, many of those officers are running to call-to-call. They do not have the time to engage the community, get out on foot the way that we would like. So we definitely have to have those officers that are the, that direct conduit. So I look to expand the community liaison officer program in each of the precincts to a community liaison squad consisting of at least one sergeant and five to six officers per precinct to really help foster that relationship between the PD and the community. I look to stand up that centralized gun violence reduction unit that I think we all would like to see come to fruition. This unit would coordinate both regionally with our federal partners, with the crime suppression squads, special investigations, and our detective bureau to really address the violent crime and make sure that we're able to mitigate it and reduce it back to the numbers that we're accustomed to in the beach. I am looking to put additional officers at some point and assign them as TFOs over to the ATF. There is an incredible benefit to having officers assigned to ATF to help facilitate, enhance federal prosecution for those individuals that we know are engaging in gun violence in Virginia Beach. I would like to stand up eventually a dedicated mountain bike unit that does nothing but address our daily hotspots and engage the community. Right now, they're spread out through the precincts with a heavy contingency down here at the oceanfront. We need to be able to engage the entire community, not just our oceanfront area. And then, you know, the pie in the sky vision down the road after we overcome all these other hurdles would be dedicated oceanfront staffing that is independent of Second Precinct. And in my mind, that would be that fifth precinct that I would love to see come to fruition down the road once we could stabilize staffing. I think there is a need. Second Precinct has a whole host of other issues that they need to address, and I think if we carved out sufficient command and personnel for the oceanfront, it would bode us well into the future as we look to address some of the issues that have come, come to light recently.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Wood, then Rosemary.
Thanks, Chief, and I appreciate you coming out here today. First off, the cadet program, I think that's outstanding. I'm glad that's finally moving forward. I do know that was, that was something that not only Chief Sakara but Chief Severo had worked on as well, so I'm glad that it looks like. So that, that's going to start up after July 1, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how many people do you think would roll through that?
I believe that it is slotted for 18 FTE positions, but being they're going to be part-time, I think we're looking at 30, 30 part-time positions is what we hope to bring in.
Okay. So you have 30 people, and they'll be vetted, obviously, so that, you know, they, if they go through this and want to go to an academy, that we know that they would be likely to pass a background check and all that? Okay.
Vice Mayor, the whole idea is to really create our own farm team. That we wrap our arms around them, we expose them to the police department, we expose them to a number of different assignments so that once they are ready, they take that entrance exam, we matriculate them right into the police academy where they are set up for success and that, you know, we're not wondering who's going to come and apply to our PD. We already know, and we know the talent because we've helped develop it.
All right. And then, I didn't hear you say it, but you said it before, the electronic reporting piece?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see that specifically. I didn't see that specifically in here, but is that, is that in your budget as well this time?
Yeah, that's already budgeted right now and we're working very diligently with Comm IT to move forward on a new records management system. We need a new RMS. The one we have right now is 25 years old. It's antiquated. It does not allow in-car reporting. You know, we talk about being evidence-based and data-driven. We know for data to be actionable, it has to be timely. Right now, our data is not timely. And the only data that we have timely are homicides and shootings, and that's because I've directed them to hand tally them on a daily basis. Everything else that's entered into the RMS is approximately seven to 10 days old before we even get eyes on it.
Okay. And then the license plate reader technology, I had thought that we had that and suspended it. Is that the case? Do you know?
My understanding is yes, and I think it was suspended due to some decisions from either the Attorney General at the time or the General Assembly that if there is a short window where you can only retain the data for 24 hours, there really is no return on investment. It would not be a wise choice for us to spend our money. If that, right now, that is not the case. My understanding is we are allowed to use ALPR technology, but I do believe that it is a topic of conversation in the General Assembly. So it could potentially change and I think that we are definitely keeping our eyes and ears open on what that could look like.
Okay. And then on the shot spotter technology, I know, and I'm just asking these questions because I've heard some of these things before. I had thought that at the oceanfront, there was some issue with the ocean being there that didn't allow them the ability to triangulate. And clearly, that seems to be where we need to, we need to have it. So the vendors are looking at that and trying to figure out a way?
I'm not, it's not something I've had to deal with. What I can tell you is they were able to successfully deploy it in a large scale with high-rise in downtown Cincinnati. Traditionally, it's three sensors per square mile. What I can tell you is they had to add additional sensors to make it work. So my experience with that company is they will do whatever it takes to make their product successful.
And then the final two things, SEPTED, you talked about, and I know most council members may or may not read it in every single planning application. It seems to be there, there's a little line that says, "The applicant is encouraged to work crime prevention, community prevention through environment, crime prevention through environmental design." So are you talking about removing that or decentralizing that or what was your plan for that?
With decentralizing community engagement, we're going to train all of our community liaison officers to employ SEPTED practices so that they can do them in the four precincts at the direction of their captain in conjunction with, with the community. You know, it really wasn't fair to the captains and it wasn't fair to the officers assigned to community engagement that they really didn't have control over what those officers did because they were working out of one centralized facility. I tell you, as a, having been a precinct or district commander, you need those officers directly under your control to interface with the community on a daily basis. And that's why we want to expand that program and that's why it was decentralized.
Okay. And then finally, on the real-time crime center, is that, is that something that could be put in the new police headquarters as part of the current construction or are you looking to put that in a different location?
No, sir. One of the first things when I was briefed on the new police headquarters and they showed me, Captain Zellman showed me the design, I asked, "Where is our real-time crime center?" And so we have made changes. We have to say that the architects have been very accommodating because we made sure that that was a priority. So now the new police headquarters, there is a dedicated spot for a real-time crime center. We just need, you know, the guidance from-
People and the equipment.
Guidance from council to move forward, but the location is there. What we would like to start doing is knowing that that's something that we believe that this body would bless so that we can give guidance on laying the foundation and the fiber and the infrastructure in that room because it's not something, it's something if we decide after the fact and we have to come in, it's going to be much more expensive than trying to stand up and prepare for it at first. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. This is, this is quite an extensive report and I thank you for this and it's, gives us a lot of good hope of getting things even more safe in our, in our wonderful city. Can you tell me, are there things here that are not funded that's on this list? Can you go through what's not funded?
The vast majority of those technological considerations are non-funded at this time, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The council member Wilson and the other members of council. So after the conversation that council and staff had on Tuesday, the direction we took was to come and present something as far as it relates to what we can do to enhance community safety in the oceanfront and other parts of the city. Well, my next steps will be after this presentation and we get a better sense of council's questions and informal guidance is to have the budget department prepare an addendum or an attaché for council's further review and consideration as part of the fiscal year '22 budget discussion. So we tend to codify all this in a document and bring back to council for council to take up as part of reconciliation.
I'm really glad to hear that because what we don't want to happen is to say, "Well, gosh, you didn't fund it and then we had some things that we could have avoided." And it was, what stopped us was money. And we want to make sure that we put the appropriate amount of money to keeping our city safe and also enhancing our police department because we really appreciate the men and women that protect us and what they're, they're doing for us every day. I can't imagine what life would be like without them. So thank you and I hope you don't have to stand as long as you did earlier last week. Thank you so much and I'm really glad to hear that, City Manager.
Thank you. Ms. Henley, then Mr. Tower.
Well, that answers one of my questions that, you know, I think we do have to fund some of these because these say enhancements for consideration. And so I think you've done a good job of providing additional things that we can do to consider. So we will need to know what is in addition. I'm assuming, for example, the, the cameras are funded at a level of 300,000, but if we want to do more, you've got a million and a half, so we have to come up with 1.2 million.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the kind of information we need to know. But I think too, it's important that we make sure that we are not only looking at the oceanfront, but other places in the city, and I appreciate the hotspots. In this gunshot detection system, you have given us the idea of, or the estimate for the oceanfront, but then I think you say that we should look at other hotspots as well. I know, listening to the news, I guess, over the weekend when we had another shooting of three individuals in Kempsville, one of the neighbors interviewed said that they had been hearing gunshots for several weeks. That's the kind of thing that we need to identify and I'm assuming that there had not been 911 calls. So I think this is something that, that is important. And so I, for one, think that's an important technology that we need not only at the oceanfront, but in other places that can be identified as hotspots so that this can be avoided. We just can't keep getting up every morning and hearing that kind of news. And as far as the real-time crime center, I was going to also ask the question, what about building two? So you've got the spot all picked out. What you're telling us is that you need 2.25 million to make it happen. So that's the additional funding that we need to be able to come up with. Well, I appreciate all that you've done. I think that these are some, certainly some technologies that we can do. We certainly need the people and we need to do what we need to do to make it good for our police officers who are coming to work every day and so forth. But if we can supplement with technology, that's good. And so I appreciate all of this. But I think too, the, the important thing is that we let all of our citizens know we're not only talking about the oceanfront, we're talking about the entire city. And this whole city has got to be safe. We just, that's just, just a got-to-be thing. And, and so as we're looking at these things, I hope we will make sure we look to make the oceanfront safe, but also look to other places that need similar attention. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for being here and thanks for, I know that you have done, are doing, will do, a lot of community engagement. I've seen, I've been invited to other events where your name, your name's at the top, top of the list and I hope to attend some of those. I really appreciate the timely response on our request that you give us, tell us what you need in terms of the budget process. That's fast work and jacking, jacking it up and to the City Manager and you, I both extend thanks and I can't, I'm really looking forward to going through that and, and having stories to tell that we can change, change the narrative because the narrative that we are not a safe city is just simply not true. We are a safe city and we are, we rank very highly in that regard and we continue, as we have in the past, to look to the newest technological changes, the best training and we'll, I know we'll continue to do that. Having said that, if you will excuse me, I do represent the oceanfront area in the Beach District and I hear from residents and stakeholders on a regular basis. And I'd like to go back and take the opportunity while I have you here to ask a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One about, and one about lighting. A number of people have said, "Yeah, we need better lighting." My question is, I Googled stadium lighting rental and found all kinds of rentals avail, available, that everything from just enhancing enough to, to fix a pothole, fix a pothole with a generator and a, I think we've all seen those if we've been in night, to real stadium lights that, that will light up, make it like daylight, I mean, for an area. I'm sure the pricing on those is not as good as it is from Sunbelt to rent things, but just, and this may be a better question for the City Manager than for you, but I really am interested in, in the immediate future, are we considering adding lighting, temporary lighting that we can deploy in places particularly within a few blocks, small block area, just to make sure we're covering those?
Absolutely, sir. And that's part of what the resort liaison officers are doing this week. They're doing that SEPTED assessment to assess lighting. It does get to be a little challenging because, and it wasn't me to put this together. I have to give thanks to the staff that put this together in short order. That's, that's where the thanks belong, but-
Always.
But we do have to because they've told me that there has been some angst between the police department and some of the business owners there about too much lighting, turning it on too soon and what that looks like. So we have to have a, some common ground and I don't think that just throwing lighting there without a conversation with the community will, will help us. But to your point, those mobile light towers proven valuable. But that is definitely something that is pretty, pretty much a low-cost response that we can definitely look into that for short-term, immediate needs, that we can hook them up to one of our trucks, drive them down there and illuminate that area as need be while we think of longer-term solutions.
Well, I, my, my sense of things with the stakeholders is that, sure, they, they, there are, they should, there should be a conversation, but in general, if, if you feel more lighting would reduce the opportunities for crime and gunfire, that's what they want, that's, you know, they'll, they certainly will back you up on that. Another question I've been asked about is retired police officers in Virginia Beach. I have no idea how many there are and whether they're, what, what the protocols are. I know for augmenting our police force, other police forces use retired officers, use private security. Could you speak to both of those, just the private security thing and the retired officers maybe individually and whether they might be useful on a contract basis to filling some of these gaps?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember, because one of the things that we've done recently is really begin to do a deep dive into our exit interviews and especially those officers that are retiring to see if there would even be an inclination that they would want to come back in some type of reserve capacity. It's not something that we have in place right now, but I believe maybe at one time we did have that. The feeling right now is those folks that are leaving law enforcement, they're doing it for a distinct reason because of, you know, the environment that we find ourselves in. And to be frank, there is, there is not an appetite for them to continue in a law enforcement capacity and they're making that quite clear in their exit interviews.
I would, and the ones that are very recently retired, I understand, but I think there are other, my, other retired officers in the area, particularly fairly senior ones whose advice and guidance and help in understanding neighborhood issues are still probably fresh enough to be of some help. And I would, I would hope we would reach out to those folks and see if they can be useful to us and if, if it requires engaging them in more than a one conversation or two, that they could be on an ongoing basis. I hope we could find, find a way to do that. I think the stakeholders would find that comforting as well. Those guys know a lot of the police officers that have been through here very, very well and have, and their opinions about them may vary, I'm sure, about any individual one, but in general, I think they're looking for as much help as you can find and would encourage you to do that. Finally, or perhaps, depending on your answer, maybe not finally, the question I keep getting asked, and I try to answer it, but I'd like to do it, is talking about weekend before last. There's a feeling that some mistakes were made in terms of planning for that weekend given, given what was happening. And there, and whether, whether you look at them as a mistake or simply a learning opportunity, what, what have we learned from that weekend? That's, that's what I keep, what are we going to, what are we doing differently that from now that we weren't doing then? If you could just address that, and I know you did to an extent last week and, and some of your comments here also address that, but if you could just focus on that question specifically, I'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely, Mr. Tower. Taking a holistic strategic look at when we deploy our assets because they are finite. And I can tell you, the staff has looked at it and historically, we have not had that type of violence and that type of activity kick off at the oceanfront in March. Typically, it starts later in April and then there is a crescendo. So we have to be very strategic because when we deploy a lot of resources, we wear our folks out. When we're 100 people short, we have to be very diligent on how often we deploy them and in what capacity because it has the potential to be a long, hot summer. And what I don't want to do is wear our officers out on the forefront when we have not historically had this type of activity, knowing that we're going to need them as we get into the true warm weather months. You know, it's, you know, it's, it's a challenge to know exactly how many officers that you should need at any given time. And we base it on a whole host of factors. We look at historical data on when crime spiked and historically, we have the crowds and that has not been our experience that we would have that type of, you know, we've never been through COVID before. So COVID throws a whole new dilemma into how people are going to react once we get a first warm day and we've all been cooped up in the house.
If I understand you correctly, you're saying that the data doesn't, would not support the theory that I hear repeated that watch out for that first warm weekend, that if it's in March, it's that we're not going to have that kind of problem?
Mr. Tower, we did upstaff. Remember, we had 12 officers in that zone where historically, we would have one. And it goes back to, we had officers there. We had an officer on the corner. So, you know, at what point, what two officers on that corner caused someone to think, I think we're talking-
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think part of it is not sort of how many officers were on at the, at night when it was actually happening, but what was happening leading up to that? Were there enough officers, given the prediction of very good weather, given the fact that if you had looked at the crowds in the afternoon, you would see that they were extremely heavy, that maybe some, you were going to need to do some flushing at some point to kind of keep, keep the, do some crowd control. I think the stakeholders are more, were more concerned, I don't think anybody says, you know, was expecting what happened. Obviously, that was unexpected to have that outbreak of that type. I think what they were really looking at is that- I think what they were really looking at is that maybe earlier in the day, there could have been some, a normal amount of coverage, but maybe some more was needed, could have been predicted by looking at the weather and what was happening in the afternoon. Is that, do you have any comment on that?
Sir, we take all that into consideration. One of the things we take into consideration is our intelligence about, you know, the crowds down there, hotel staffing, social media activity. At that point, to the best of my knowledge, there was nothing to indicate that we needed to upstaff beyond what we had based on where we were in the season.
Okay. Well, there's definitely a perception that, that the attention earlier in the, earlier in the day, and starting with the prediction of warm weather for that weekend, whether it was in March or April, really needs to be factored in on, in the future. That's, I think that, again, I can't say it's a scientific survey, but from the stakeholders I've heard, they really are not critical criticizing for what happened under the, they thought the reaction of the police and the, and the other first responders was extraordinary and really saved lives and saved people, and they're very grateful for it. They're just trying to have a conversation with you, and I know they'll do it on their own as well, but I felt like I wasn't responding to, if I didn't bring it up at this time.
Mr. Tower, and I appreciate it. And we're doing our absolute best to make informed, educated decisions on where we are. One of the things that we do have to consider is when we pull other officers, we're pulling them from other communities and other parts of the city. So we're trying not to leave other parts of the city without significant resources to making an educated guess on how many folks we need to pull down to the oceanfront.
Right, I understand that. It's just the investment that the city has in the resort area is, goes beyond residences and, and commercial activities. It's just a big part of our, a big part of our community's tax base, and I really want to make sure we don't, we do as much as we can. There's a lot of things need to happen. It's not policing is not the, the main issue, and I don't want you to think that it is. I think public safety generally, and all of the things that contribute to it, there are a lot of things we need to do at the oceanfront, not, not just increase the policing and be smarter about it. We need to do that, but there are a lot of other things as well. And look forward to working with you and trying to find ways to solve all, all the issues we have down there. And I'm looking forward to a great summer. I think, you know, we look at it and we say, gee, it's a tough start in March, but I really am confident that people are going to come to Virginia Beach and have a wonderful time because they've been doing it for hundreds of years, and there's no reason to think they won't. And with your guidance, I hope we can take good care of all of our visitors and our residents. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Moss, Mr. Rouse, Mr. Wood.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and my colleagues, there probably isn't a more important budget discussion than public safety. Mrs. Henley said it best, and I concur with her, that, that public safety is our number one priority. And later, I commented that yes, people are first and property is second, so the police department is on the top of the list, and then dealing with flooding is right behind it. But, but I have appreciated all our private conversations, and I'm really happy to see a number of those things are reflected here. It is unfortunate that in the past, we have had not the same level of candidness and transparencies as to our public safety issues. And so the council, in many cases, didn't get to see all the fissures and the underlying impact on the force structure at the street level that our decisions were made. I can't speak to the motivations for as why that is, but now we can see all, all the warts and all the opportunities, and so it's our job to fix those. But I would like to start off and just walk through your brief. I think that might be the easiest way for me and for my colleagues. But I want to start off on an item that was on the budget in 2011, and I know all my colleagues who were here then will remember the discussion about e-ticket. Because in our cars, as we've heard the officers talk, they fill out all that paperwork, all those little accident insurance forms for every single person involved in the accident. That was 2011, when other communities already had e-ticket in their vehicles. And I was told we were on this path to success. A decade is way too long. So my comment, when the IT people come, Mr. City Manager, we shouldn't be hearing at the end of next year that we don't have e-ticket in all our cars. You know, maybe we get Elon Musk helping us because he's gotten a SpaceX faster than we could get e-ticket in our cars, and I think we have no excuse for our poor performance. Please impress upon them and get the right people to make that happen. That's a 20% force multiplier when you look at the, and how can we turn that down when we're 100 officers short? Those people need to put their foot on the gas pedal and get that done. But on a more positive note, I know to my colleagues, we have this market survey that's out there, but I don't think we should, I think we can hardly overshoot the target if we act in this budget cycle to remedy some of the structural deficiencies that we know to exist. So I would hope, Mr. City Manager and the police chief, you will be bringing us back specific recommendations with a dollar value on it, that we can amend this budget and not wait till a market survey. We are probably not going to undershoot what it tells us, and if we do, I mean, overshoot it. And if we do overshoot it, well, then that just increase our competitive edge. But I don't want that to be the reason we aren't sending a signal that I think is absolutely necessary for retention, and I think we need, we need to deal with that. But as I did speak with you on Slide 8, I think when we look at this ninth lowest starting salary out of 10 regions, I know you don't have the people to do this, but the Budget Office does, you really have to normalize that for cost of living in those territories. I know 13 of the departments we set are in the state, a lot of those are in Northern Virginia, and if you purchased a house there lately, you'd get a different perspective as to what those salaries are. So I, I think we've got to make sure we know about our competitive relative to our cost of living, but that certainly is no reason to not do that. I think you covered the hiring set of considerations well. It would be nice to know that if we couldn't deal somehow with, I think, is it DCGS?
Yes, sir.
That's at the state level, I assume?
Yes, sir.
With the State Police Department? Maybe some conversations with the government's office, maybe we could get some kind of matrix so we'd have a higher degree of confidence of what those things are for the markets that we really are planning on targeting, so it's not just every place. But if we're going to maybe Portland, you know, or Seattle, where they have a very hostile environment, the police departments, maybe we could kind of narrow down that matrix and increase our, the certainty of our offer. I certainly would encourage that. Camera expansion, certainly the British have shown that cameras work. At least they work on apprehending people and sometimes prevention. But on, and gunshot detection systems, I brought this up two or three budget cycles back. I didn't get near the positive reception it now has, which I think is great. But there is issues with the, with false detections, and it may get to the heart of Councilman Wood's point of view, does in fact, the ocean movement, the waves cracking, is that acoustic propagation from that similar to or like the signals from gunshots at a distance might be the cause? But I do know these systems have false, I've done some research, have a false prediction rate, so I think we would want to know what that false prediction rate is. And I'm sure you're looking at that, but I would ask you to come back and share that with us when we do an acquisition. What is its real performance? And none of these systems, even radar at airports is 100%, and so we want to make sure it's, we're getting our money's worth in terms of probabilistic of the detection being valid. That would be, that would be good.
Councilmember, if I could?
Hmm?
My experience is it's about 95% accurate. 95% of the time when we respond out, it is true gunfire. Like you said, you know, technology, whether it's body cameras, gunshot detection, it's not infallible, but it has a high positive correlation rate. How that will be affected by the ocean, that's something I'll have to look into.
On this automatic license plate reader, this really is a privacy concern that I even have. And so I do think that if this comes forward, I would like to see what is our governance policy relative to how long the data is retained? And under what conditions could people subpoena it for other purpose for which we would not like to have that done?
Yes, sir.
You know, and that causes other issues, and I don't want to be the private detective for other people's social issues that are civil nature. But I think, I think governance of this is just as important as some other oversight that we talk about, and I know it concerns people greatly about the privacy of data. And I think that same concern would apply to any large data center where lots of stuff is being aggregated. I would want to consciously know what data sharing arrangements we would have with that data, what's the purpose? Because I think for crime, yes, but we have seen across the country where these systems have been used for something other than their intended purpose, and oversight is essential. I do think you're right on about the data analysis and having intel officers to help you look at the data. But I know I've also talked about not just, and I'm going to share it here because I've shared it with you, one of the things I think that deals with retention and sets the pace is also promotional opportunities in a force have a lot to do with retention, where, what's your opportunity to stay? And if you stay, what's your opportunity to move up? Police departments aren't an up-and-out process like the military, which is designed to make sure if you don't promote, you have to leave, and that creates a flow point and people move on and creates that refreshment. So that means our structure has, the structure of our department. I know we created NPO, you may recall, I know Louis Jones and Barbara Henley were at the time we created Master Police Officers back, I think that was late 80s, I think it was, something like that. That created an opportunity for people to advance. I know I've chucked with you about, we don't really have a quote-unquote "command" master police officer who sits in your office and who represents, on a leadership point of view, the deckplate officers and their concerns like readiness fatigue and other things. And as your voice down, I think we have opportunities where our force structure should have more advancement opportunities that are meaningful work, but give us better flow points to provide advancement opportunities at the right gates of service. I think that's, that's very important. And we need to relook at when we are providing very intensive training that makes people marketable, we do this in the military, what's the retention requirement or commitment they make in return for the training that they get? Usually, it's three days for every one day you get, that's a military standard, pretty close. But an opportunity I don't think we're taking advantage of is under the interpersonal governmental Act of 1972, we could go out to ATF and ask them to put someone here, we could pay the per diem expense, but they would pay the salary. And likewise, if we thought there was really something to be gained, we can place someone at their agency, pay their salary. So I don't know that we've really looked at how to fully leverage that act. I mean, but that is an act that's been out there a long time, but does provide opportunities for exchange or a placement. And often, I'm sure that agencies, the feds often can't afford to pay the per diem cost of those things, so they don't do them, but they still have to pay them for the benefit of gaining the experience of understanding local government. They may well be able to have someone play, come here, and then we pay that per diem cost, might be a, a good trade. So I would ask, encourage you to look at that. And to close, I want to come back to the last point I made. First point I was making is I don't think we need to wait for the salary conclusions to address with known shortfalls that we have that make us not competitive, and we should build that into this budget, and we should. And there is more than enough, and I'm going to have a letter here, which I'll be passing out later today, that shows my own way how we could generate, you know, $5.8 million to invest in public safety, and a large part of that's recurring revenues that would allow us to forward and get on top and ahead of what we know as a, to better recognize, because the marketplace is demanding it, and fix a structural deficit in our compensation structure for retention that's driven by the marketplace and our vacancies. And I, and I know that that's what, I think we need that, and I think we can do that. I have the greatest respect for our folks on the deckplate doing that every day, and I am concerned, as you mentioned, I'm glad you attended that, the readiness fatigue of our force must be on the foremost of our concern, because lots of people leave, often it's not for pay, it's the quality of the leadership at the first line supervisor, and it's a bad work-life balance. Those are the things that cause people more often than not. And of course, we're adding more of the national lack of, of, I'll call it honoring the service that makes people think, hey, I'm not appreciated, there's other places I can go in life. And that's certainly not the message I know we want to send, and we aren't sending, but I, every way we can to get that across. Mr. Mayor, maybe we should do a council video, or you should be it, as part of our recruiting effort, so that people really know that the leadership of this community, the elected, the city manager, just what a, how a partnership we have with the community on public safety, and that their service is honored and appreciated and recognized. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse, then Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for being here today.
Yes, sir, councilmember.
I want to thank you and your staff for your expedience in getting us this information from the special session on called on Tuesday. My question centers around the body-worn cameras expansion. In expanding the body-worn cameras to all 450 patrol officers, or to every sworn officer, I think it was, as you stated, is there, are we looking at the same technology? Are we looking at a difference in technology as far as the automatic activation on that? And so I'll let you answer that one first.
Sort of be the same camera that we have right now, but there would be a possibility to upgrade into the Axon 3, but that still does not have an automatic, there are certain things that can trigger it. Right now, if you turn on the lights and sirens in the car, it can trigger that activation, the technology that we've discussed with the signal sidearm. Potentially, we would probably want to come back and ask for additional signal sidearms for the entire force at this time when we don't know if the technology that we have currently is going to work. We did not make that request. We want to iron out what we have in hand and make sure that it is a viable technology before I come before this council and ask for additional monies on something that I can't tell you right now is a solid technology.
So aside from the body, the, the single sidearm activation, the cameras that we are looking at expanding to, is that, is that not the top-tier cameras? Is that not the most efficient? Are we, or are we trying to save a little bit of money by getting something that's more readily available?
No, the Axon 2 is, from my understanding, that is the gold standard right now. They have an Axon 3 that they have been testing and putting into production, more streamlined, better battery life, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have the automatic trigger. I'm not aware of any of them that just have a automatic trigger.
Okay.
Absent, you activate lights and sirens, potentially the signal sidearm. I think they're building some into them that potentially it'll activate if an officer would go prone, in case they would be shot. You know, technology is advancing rapidly.
Sure.
And probably by the time you and I finish this conversation, it will have changed what they have. So we're definitely looking at, at the top-tier technology. My understanding is right now that is Axon, there is no one that does it better. They have really pioneered the body-worn camera. So that's, that's where we are, and we'll continue with the blessing of this council to always seek the best technology for our officers.
Great, just, I wanted to make sure and clarify, we are, we want the best, you know, the gold standard for our officers. The second part of the question is, being that we are looking to expand to body-worn cameras to every officer within our police force, are, is there, are you reviewing the policy or procedures of body-worn cameras in ways that we can improve, you know, the policy of body-worn cameras?
Absolutely. We're in the process of doing that right now.
Okay, great. I like, once you guys figure out the improvements or what comes from that discussion, I'd like to know more about that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood, and if I can ask you to expedite? Okay. At this, folks, remember, we have a hard break, we're going to shoot for four o'clock. So, you know, we still have a bunch to do, and hopefully get a little bit of a break-in because we do have an expanded executive session coming up. Once again, I'm sure, Chief, you'll make yourself available throughout the process and available to the individual council members, and for that, we thank you very much.
Always. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. All righty. I think we're ready for the sheriff.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the sheriff's department is going to come and present on their fiscal year '22 budget.
Welcome, Sheriff Solly.
Thank you for having me here. I want to start off by saying that I think the budget that the city manager's office has approved is good with us, and so you'll be-
has approved is good with us, and, and so you'll be relaxed to know I'm not going to ask for any money today, and I'm not going to go through my presentation either. I think you all have to have that, and I think it's self-explanatory, and I know you all, some of you all appreciate that. But I do want to talk to you about a couple of things. And, you know, there, the big issue we're facing right now is manpower, and I think that, to give you some perspective on that, as the police department, as the chief has just testified, there are 100 officers down, we're 44 deputies down. And when you take that into consideration, Norfolk is 180 police officers down, and, and the attrition rate for the Virginia Sheriff's Association with large jails is about 35%, and we're about 14%, 15%. And so I think we're doing very well in, in the city to retain our jobs, but we're not able to hire a lot of new people. And to put these numbers in perspective, let me tell you that we have, we have, we have staffing issues, we have 46 vacancies, and right now, we have 10 deputies that are on quarantine for exposure to COVID, and, and there are 25 deputies on FML, and there's 20 deputies on limited duty. This brings us, are total to, are, are down total to 106 deputies, and so that's over 25% of our workforce. And so it gives you an idea of how that impacts us, it impacts us on, on the floor of the jail, it impacts us on, and the courthouse, the courthouse is still not able to resume the, the normal operations they have, because we don't have enough deputies to fund, to protect the judges over there, so we have limited court operations going on over there. We have, we started a new process where we have seven deputies are taken out of courts and provide video arraignments and bond hearings and things of that nature, but we're, we're still not able to open up the, the, the courts to full capacity. To give you an idea of what we're doing to try and address this shortfall, we have lowered our age to 18, which is something we've resisted for a long time, but we, we decided to go to age 18 to hire deputies. We just started a process where we had 90 applicants, 52 were tested, 40 are still in the process, and so that's the type of attrition rate we get. And, and I think that we just, people aren't willing to do this job now with all the social unrest that's going on, and, and the COVID-19 has really impacted our ability to do, do the hiring. And so I think that we're, we're, hopefully that we're going to be able to do better, but we're not sure that that's going to come about. The, the, unfortunately, I think that things are going to get worse before they get better. And I think that, you know, when we talk, talk about hiring, we, it's almost a six-month process, and that's to account the academy, you know? We have to go through a hiring process where we do background investigations and things of that nature. And, and we are trying to do all that, but, you know, I think it's the social unrest and the COVID-19 has brought about an atmosphere where it's hard to hire law enforcement officers, as is indicated by the numbers. And I think it's going to get worse before it gets better. I've agreed to provide deputies to support the police department's manpower efforts on the oceanfront this summer, but it costs me a lot more money to run the sheriff's office with fewer deputies than it does, because I got to pay, you know, we have a certain amount of hours we got to accumulate and, and man. And so if I don't have the staff to do that, I got to pay them time and a half, and we're at the point now where I'm not having people volunteer to do the overtime. I'm going to have to do the mandatory overtime here soon, which is, it'll probably create fewer or more resignations. And so I think that this is something that we have to deal with, and our priority will always be doing what is right for, to keep citizens safe, but this is, this, it won't be sustainable in the long term. And I think that the situation is getting caused by COVID. I think we had the fewest deputies contact COVID last week, and that was four, four deputies. We've had as many as 20-some deputies, 28 deputies in COVID in a, in a two-week time period. And so, you know, we, we did very good resisting COVID coming into the jail, but once it got there, it's almost impossible to get out, and so we're still working on that. I think we're going to have to take, even though I'm not asking for money, I think you're going to have to take a hard look at, at the national comparisons that you're always just talking about. And I think that, you know, you do that, even if we don't have pay raises out of it, I think the deputies and the police officers will have a better feeling that they're being treated fairly and, and enjoy their, their, their time on the Virginia Beach Police Department now, or in the sheriff's office. Now, let me, let me say this, this is going to be off, off message a little bit, but I think that you all have an outstanding law enforcement, enforcement community here, and I think you all recognize that. I think the police department did an outstanding job in the past weekends, and, and I, and that's from 40 years of experience as a police officer, as a lawyer, that practiced criminal justice, as a state senator for 18 years, and as the sheriff for the last 11 years. I think you all served with an outstanding police department here and an outstanding sheriff's office, and I think you all deserve the credit for that. You know, I remember when the social unrest started, a lot of police, a lot of city councils stepped away from their police office, the police departments and their sheriff's office, but you all did not, and I really appreciate that, and I won't forget that. And so in closing, I want to just say that I want to thank you for your support of the sheriff's office, and your support of the police department, because we have to work hand in glove to make things work, and I'll be happy to respond to any questions that you all have.
Any questions for the sheriff? Yeah, Ms. Henley? And then Mr. Tower, and please, if we could try to be succinct.
Well, I will just comment that in noticing our weekly updates on the COVID, the sheriff's department has had a lot of, a lot to cope with as far as the COVID goes, and that was a, a difficult year, and I, I know you all handled it as, as well as you could, and it was tough, I'm sure, for all of your folks to, to have to come to work every day knowing what that situation was. Thank you for handling it as you did.
It's just the environment. Last week, I was exposed to COVID five times, and I had both my shots and had a, had a test today, a test today, and I don't have COVID, but I was exposed to it five times, and that's, that's usual for the deputies. It's not uncommon for the deputies to be exposed to COVID that many times in a week. And so I think, I appreciate your understanding of that.
In noticing your initiatives underway in conclusion, you have here an aging facility. Hard to believe, but I guess that building's about 40 years old?
Yes, ma'am, 1970, 76, I believe it came on.
Yeah, I, I think I went to the ribbon cutting, or whatever you call it, we had back in that day. It's hard to believe it's that old, but I suppose you are going to have to start looking at, at the fact that it's.
We are, and, and I was, I was pushing a, trying to change the, the makeup around a little bit. I wanted to go to a hospital, a mental health hospital there, and replace A Wing with a mental health hospital, because I think the times of us building more bricks and mortar for jails has gone by. I think what we have to do now is focus on who needs to be incarcerated, who doesn't need to be incarcerated, by focusing on who you're afraid of, what citizens have committed crimes that make you afraid of them, violent predators, and those people that commit property crimes that you're just mad at. We can't keep incarcerating the people that we're mad at, it just doesn't make sense to do that. We have about 80% of our, our inmates now are mentally ill, and it's hard to believe that, but about 80% are mentally ill. And I'm, I'm suggesting that we open, you know, I don't think the city's got the funds to fund a hospital, but I think regionally, we do have the funds to fund a hospital if we can get the state's involvement. And I spent about an hour on the phone with Secretary Moran and, and the top of mental health people up there today, trying to talk them into, trying to buy the regional jail and, and turn that into a mental health hospital. And so we're, we're.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to bring up next, is the mental health issue. And I know that you all have a program that you've had, working with the inmates who, who had mental health issues, and, and that's great, but I think we also have to look at the mental health of everybody in that facility.
Right.
Because I think that's where, if we're going to make any improvements, that's where it's got to be. And I don't know if, if you have given thought to what we might do. I know I had made a suggestion when we were talking about how to use some of the CARES funding, that maybe we needed to put some on mental health of, in our, in our facility. We didn't pursue that at that time, but I haven't forgotten it. I think it's something that's, that's critical, and I think we've got to come up with a way to deal with the mental health of the people. Just the very fact that they are isolated, we all know what happens when you're isolated. We all got an experience of that this year. It doesn't work well with your mental situation, and, and it's got to be an issue, and I think we have to address it. So I hope you will come up with some.
Well, we already have a plan.
I'm sure you're working on one, and I hope we can, we can participate with that.
We, we got a $3 million grant from the General Assembly about two and a half years ago, we're starting the third year here soon, and we, we've taken our, we've taken our recidivism rate from 95% down to 7% on the mentally ill, and that's hundreds of people who've gone through the program. And it's just a miracle that, and I, I contributed all to the, the Community Service Board, Eileen and, and, I can't remember the other woman's name right now, but Eileen and, over there, they, they've done a great job. They're the ones that came up with, 80% of our inmates are mentally ill, Eileen and Angie over there. And so I think that, well, we, the meeting today was to show the state what we've done, and, and say, if you do this statewide, it's not going to, it's not going to cost as much money as you think it is. And my experience with the General Assembly is that if you have a problem, but you don't have a solution for it, you're never going to get a, you're never going to get it funded. You've got to have a solution for the problem to get the funding. And so I think we showed them the solution today. I think it's going to, it's going to dramatically impact the ability of us to deal with the mentally ill in our facilities.
Well, I think it's something we really have to, to work with going forward, and I appreciate your recognition of all of that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Tower, if we could be succinct, please.
Very succinct. Thank you, Sheriff Staley, for all you have done for, for our city. I, I've had the pleasure of dealing with the sheriff in, in, in his many prior roles, or at least some of them, as a, as a lawyer, as a, as a senator. We are so lucky to have you, and I appreciate very much your support of our police department, too. I don't think they could do what they're doing without you. We, we lose senior people, I can't think of anyone who I would worry more about losing than you with your knowledge of state government in particular. Please, please teach people everything you can about what you know. We all need to, we all need to do that, but I, I personally am so grateful to have you in that role, and.
Thank you.
And I know it's been an extraordinarily difficult year.
It has been.
Winship and I think of you often in, in your role, and are both very grateful for all you do. Thanks.
Good, thank you.
Guy, if I, if I could, Mr. Tower, we've got two light towers, as you call it, you guys can use anytime you need it. We got them from DMRO, we got the, we got the, we got the, the, the generators that go with them, and so we can deploy them anytime we need. We use them for our, our compound in the back, if we have mass arrests, but if we don't have a mass arrest, you all can use them anytime you want to. And I, I agree with you, I think lighting does prevent a lot of crime, but you got to have the patron of the, the community to put them up.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much, Ken, really appreciate it.
Thank you, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you all take care. Always love to see government at work.
You got it. Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, the clerk of court, Tina Sinan, will be presenting on the circuit court's budget.
Hello, how are you? Welcome.
Good, thank you very much, and I will jump on with Mr. Tower. I work with Ken a lot over in the circuit court, and he does an amazing job, he really does. His staff as well. Mr. Dehaney, Mayor Dyer, honorable counsel, thank you for having me today. Michael told me to keep my remarks brief, so I've cut my presentation down to about 90 minutes, so, just teasing. Well, here we are again. My budget, I'm very easy, considering the last few that we've listened to, so I know you wish everybody's buzzer was as easy as mine, but I'm, I always like to come before you, just to give you a quick reminder of what your clerk's office does. We perform many services for the citizens of Virginia Beach. We are located on the third floor of Building 10 and 10B. I have 57 full-time positions, including myself, eight in admin, four in probate and licensing, 11 in land records, 15 in my civil department, 17 in my criminal department, and two in filing. 57 people to handle more than 800 duties assigned by the Code of Virginia. I would venture to say that if you haven't used my office in the past, you will without a doubt use my office at some point in your life. All the duties we perform, we affect each and every citizen in Virginia Beach, whether it's buying a house and recording the deed, or better yet, paying off your mortgage and recording that certificate of satisfaction, obtaining a marriage license for yourself or one of your children, or becoming a notary, or having to probate a will or estate for a loved one that has passed. And my folks in that particular department, all my staff are the best in the state. We record all the land records, which consist of deeds, deeds of trust, powers of attorney, judgments, military discharges, that is just on the recording side. We have this whole other very complex court side. We handle name changes, adoption, divorce, larger-sized civil suits, the heinous criminal matters, and everything that is appealed from the district courts. We have eight judges in our court running a docket every single day. I do get excited talking about all my office does, especially this year with COVID. We are truly public servants, and my staff is good at what they do. As you know, all the state funding I get is salary reimbursement for 52 FTEs. The city funding that I receive pays for five FTEs, the fringes and the daily operational costs to efficiently run my office. Most of everything that we receive in the budget is funding for salaried employees, city and state. The total budget number combining state and the locality is $3,844,215. The state reimbursement is $2,195,857, which consists of salaries and some fringes, and the city is contributing a generous $1,648,357, which consists of my five full-time employees at $176,000 in fringes and benefits, and the operating expenses of approximately $219,331. Out of that $219,000, keep in mind that $124,000 of that is for risk management and telephones, items that I have no control over. And honestly, we are basically running our office on about a $95,000 budget. So you can see, we do keep our operational costs very low for the second-largest jurisdiction in the Commonwealth. Albeit small, this is a budget that continues to allow us to maintain an acceptable responsiveness with the workload to continue to serve the citizens, citizens of Virginia Beach, and also helping our role of public safety to the community. I truly believe we are a big part of that public safety. The police department arrests them, the sheriff Staley houses them, they got to come through somebody's system, and that's us. I want to quickly mention that in this crazy pandemic year, our deed recordings went from $68,899 to $87,657 in 2020, and gun, gun permits almost doubled from $5,800 to $9,600. And because many of the other area clerk's offices were not open and only taking certain appointments, and because we opened an unprecedented satellite location for almost all of 2020, the marriage license department was extremely busy. We did that with the help of a gentleman who owns Farmers Bank, Mr. Richard Holland. He was gracious in allowing us to use the location that he had in the Punggol District without costing very much money to do that. That was a tremendous help to my office, keeping the public as well as my staff safe. I'm very thankful for my city for realizing that core government services that the clerk's office provides its citizens is important, and as always, I'm very grateful for the help my city's given me in the past and continues to give us. I'm particularly thankful at this uncertain time for the remote access that we provide to our community with our online e-recording system for land records. The main reason we were able to make those numbers jump, our officer of the court remote access system on the court side was also very helpful in the pandemic. We continue striving to enhance our services by way of technology, and this is certainly no easy task. And we do that without much help on the technology side as far as monetary concerns are, we, we pay for that ourselves, and I think that's a huge help to the city as well as the citizens. We continue to try and make our Supreme Court case management system better for the legal community who depend on it. We now have our court case information on DACA boards in the courthouse to help make it easier for the public to find. We are enhancing those right now. We continue moving to becoming completely fileless in our civil department as well as our criminal department. We'll continue our efforts to use technology to be more efficient for our citizens. The technology in the clerk's office regarding land, land records and more complicated court cases continues to be cost-effective and greatly benefits locality, and we now know and experience it's critical to providing those services in a pandemic. And last, but certainly not least, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the Virginia Beach Clerk's Office continues to be a source of revenue for the state and for the locality as we remain an excess fee office, which is not the case in all offices around the Commonwealth right now. And just to explain excess fees, the clerk's office performs services, and there's clerk's fees tied to those services in the performance of our duties. We collectively collect fees, and after those fees, help to pay for funding our offices, whatever's left over for each locality, comes back to us in excess fees. So we actually help to fund our own offices in addition to providing excess monies for the state and the locality. I hope that makes sense. In fiscal year 2020, the Virginia Beach Circuit Court Clerk's Office managed to collect approximately $2,109,935 in excess fees, of which $703,000 fees, of which $703,000 came back to the city of Virginia Beach. And in city revenue, we managed to collect $12,967,439 for the locality in a pandemic. There's no understating that 2020 was a very trying year for all of us, but customer service still remains the golden rule of my office. To serve the citizens of our great city with the best customer service that is second to none, even in the pandemic year, and it's most important to me. And I believe that my folks strive to do that every day. They might not have a perfect day every day, but for the most part, I think they're generally, generally pretty good to the public. Thank you for all that you do to help the Virginia Beach Clerk's Office achieve our goal of being the best public servants we can be. And I can certainly answer any questions.
Thank you, and appreciate everything you do. Any questions, Mr. Moss?
Just a brief comment. I want to say your office does provide Disney-quality customer service.
Disney. I like it.
And I also would like to say that you're an exemplary professional example of someone who invests in technology and actually achieves labor productivity rather than asking us for both the IT investment and then additional manpower on top. You are to be applauded for your achievements.
Thanks, John. I appreciate that a lot. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Tina. Appreciate it. And thanks again.
Thank you very much.
And pass our thanks on to your staff. Thank you.
We'll do that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Honorable Philip C. Halliwell, Judge of the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, will present on the fiscal year 22 budget proposal.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council. Very good to see everyone.
Welcome.
All right. If you thought that Tina's presentation was simple, sweet, to the point, you haven't seen anything yet, we are much easier. All right. We are the Virginia Beach Juvenile Domestic Relations District Court. We've got 37 full-time employees. We've got six judges. Our, we're all state employees. We don't have any city employees. I think we might, at one point in time, we had a, some city wage money for a part-time employee, but I think that has gone away. Our total budget, as you can see, is $173,000. That is exclusively for the things that the city has mandated to provide for us, a state agency, postage, phone service, these types of things. We, I think very generously, the council asked us, the city manager's office asked us to reduce our budget. We don't, we're not a revenue generating agency like Tina's office is, or even the general district court. As you know, the juvenile court, we just deal with the kids and custody and visitation with parents. We have no control over our ability to generate any kind of fees for the city or for our own use. So we, we were asked to cut our budget, and we did accordingly. Although I think we're starting to get a better relationship with the city, our relationship is still one that I don't believe is all that good. And again, an example would be this budget increase for our iPod licensing fee. If you don't know what iPod is, iPod is a, is a program that allows for the police department to put online their officers' availability for training purposes, vacation purposes, and that type of thing. And when a criminal case comes in, it has to be continued, or it has to be set for hearing, the iPod system is there for us to be able to look at and see when the officers will be available. This is not, not something that the court is tasked to do. It's not a court task or anything of that nature. We do it as a courtesy to the police department and to sometimes to the Commonwealth. In our latest budget meeting, we were asked to provide $4,000, $3,000 for the iPod license. And it infuriated me. And I called and, and had some, some talks with the people who I needed to speak to, because we're at your mercy. All we get is state funding. We get very little, as you can see, from the city to help us out. And here they, the city was demanding that we pay for this iPod licensing. And it's courtesy to the police department, or courtesy for the police department that we do that. Now, it was resolved, thankfully. But I bring it to your attention because, you know, it needs to be done. That you need to be aware that the relationship between the courthouse and the city isn't as good as it could be. Part of the capital infrastructure projects include technology upgrades. We were able to get some, I guess, electronic audiovisual equipment through CARES funding to help us do video hearings, and that type of thing, remote hearings, which the Supreme Court mandated that we tried in an effort to help out the citizens of Virginia Beach in their filings. City IT was able to provide three of our six courtrooms with that type of hardware, and it was installed earlier this year. Took a while. Once again, the city came in and said, well, look, we installed this, this hardware. Next year, you're going to have to pay $7,000 for the licensing fees. Once again, that's not something that we can do. We don't generate, all, all the money we get is, is from the state. Things are getting better as far as our relationship. I think unfortunately, Dave Bradley became a good point of contact for us, but I know he's resigned. And between Judge Lilly, who's the chief judge of the circuit court, Dan Lahn, chief judge of the general district court, myself, we're trying to get a good point of contact within the city manager's office to alleviate some of these concerns. There are, I believe, matters in the budget that include installation of some security, some swipe cards that are not in all of our doors, just some of our doors have them, also for some security upgrades. Now, a couple of years ago, I appeared before council, and you guys graciously gave us, I believe, $60,000, $44,000 for supplemental funding for our deputy clerks. Like I said, we've got 37 of them. They are all just straight salary. We have a terrible time of retention, retain, just retention, these clerks. They leave for other city positions. They leave to go to the sheriff's office. They leave to go to the city attorney's office. They leave to go to the Commonwealth attorney's office because they can flat pay them better. Now, it's only so much of y'all is concerned, but we serve the citizens of Virginia Beach. And so even though it's, the funding is not in the city manager's budget, I would urge you to put this, just, it's barely $1,000 per employee, put that back in the, in the budget to give us some hope for our, our clerks. They, they need help salary-wise. So we're gonna continue with the technology upgrades in our courtroom. I believe that there is some money in the, in the budget to continue to put hardware to help us with technology in the courtrooms. It's been a benefit, a benefit, a lot of, in a lot of the civil areas with custody and visitation cases, child support cases, that type of thing. We can't necessarily do a trial, criminal trial by video, but we have been able to do some civil hearings, and that's been a benefit during this COVID time. I would remind you guys, we remained open all during COVID. The clerk's office, this is Amy Burnham, she is the clerk of court, and she and her employees have done a great job trying to keep the workflow going. We're falling behind. We're not, we're not doing as many cases as we, as we had in the past, but we're doing everything we can to make up the backlog. And just to give you a couple of raw numbers, and I know you probably hate numbers. We did 60,913 cases last year. And, and it's only gonna increase once the, once the, you know, court's fully open up. That's about 10,100 hearings per judge. So we are very, very busy. I think we're the second or third busiest court in the state. And we need any help that you can give us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Yep. Ms. Wogan.
Thank you, Judge Howell, for your presentation. And I remember that conversation in 2018 because I was just coming on council, and I remember talking to you about some of the concerns regarding funding for salaries for the clerks. And I hope that we can get that extra $1,000 for the clerks, because I know that's important. They don't get paid a lot. And they provide an essential service to the citizens of Virginia, Virginia Beach, as you stated. So I appreciate your passion. You know, I remember talking with you, and you have such passion to advocate for your staff. They do an excellent job, and you're a great advocator. And I appreciate the services that you, your staff provide, and I appreciate the work that you do. You've, I've taken some notes regarding some of the things that can be improved. Tell, tell me how we can better, better our relationship with your department. Are there areas, other areas we can improve in?
Certainly, the, in the financial area, I know the city moved to some sort of financial program where we have to submit some reimbursements and stuff like that. That has been, I'm gonna say an abject failure, but it's been amazingly difficult for my staff, Amy and her administrative assistant is Peggy Davie, to, to be able to communicate with the city on just simple financial matters or reimbursements. And I think part of the problem is that we just don't, you know, look, we're not a city agency. We don't speak Virginia Beach City Eve, dealing with the budget. And, you know, it took me the longest part, time to remember what a CIP, you know, is, you know. My wife is a patent attorney, and that's a continuation in part in the patent world. But, you know, so I think just getting together, meeting regularly. I know Ed Feeney with IT is, he's been a big proponent of that. He's helping me, you know, try to put together a team to meet, you know, quarterly or something like that. So we can, you know, part of it is just being, I think, present. And, but I think collaboration, just more collaboration, so we understand the city process, so you guys understand, you know, some of our issues would be important. Amy, do you have anything you want to add?
No. And to support all the IT needs that we have that are coming up.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just to support the IT needs that we have going forward. I heard earlier talking about the e-ticket or the e-summons. That would be a huge help, you know, for the police department, but also for the clerk's office. Just that kind of thing would help our efficiency. But yes, the, the meeting with the other departments, you know, the courthouse is getting up there in, in years, and it's gonna need some support over the next few years. So keep that in the back of your mind, too, with our infrastructure needs.
Yeah. A, a perfect example of that is our intercom system. The juvenile court is confidential, so it's not an open courtroom. Everybody has to wait outside until they're called in. Our intercom system, it works terribly on a good day. And, you know, I've had people come over and there's, they tell me, well, it's working as designed. Well, you know, it's 25 years old now. And so what we end up having to do is, one of my clerks have to go out, call the parties in, the attorneys or bailiff or something. And it's just, you know, a simple thing like that is enough to, you know, kind of ruin your day when you can't just, you know, have, call over the phone and have people come in. You know, that's just one, one small thing as far as the infrastructure goes. And I will say, look, we would, we would be able to triage the cases, do a lot better with maybe a couple employees who come in, who work with the people in the waiting area to get the cases ready for the judges to hear. This is another thing that I'm gonna have to go to our state delegation for. We desperately need a seventh judge. We're operating on six judges right now. And it, everything has to come through a judge. We're sort of, you know, the chokehold of the situation. And we're not gonna get through the pandemic case law without having an extra judge, for sure. But having the right support staff behind it, we hardly can support six judges right now. And if we get a seventh judge, you know, we will need more support to be able to facilitate getting people in and out. If you come in and file right now a petition for custody and visitation of your child, your first initial hearing is gonna be five months, five months before you can get into court. And then you'll come into the initial hearing, and I'll look at you, and, and, you know, do you have an agreement with your spouse? No, we don't. We need a trial. Another five months before you can come in and get four hours of my time. Same, it's not quite as bad, I don't think, with the criminal defendants. We're trying to keep those under 90 days. If you're charged for the crime, you'll have, you know, especially if you're kept in custody, we'll try to get you within 60 days, I think, is the accepted timeframe for the state. But we're, you know, we're backed up, and, and we're doing the best we can.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
I also remember your comments. I appreciate you as well.
Absolutely. I appreciate the, your candidness and the valuable feedback. I'm, I'm sure that we can work on these areas going forward. Thank you so much for all you do.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Judge Howell. Just have a direct question. You said that you're asking for supplemental, supplemental return of, of the salary. Is, is that direct salary, is that number 44,000? I didn't see a number associated with it.
That is what was in the budget last year.
Is that what you're asking for now?
I would ask for five times that.
I know you're asking for the moon and back. I'm not even gonna get it. I'm just...
Yes, sir. I mean, I, I think that, and, and once again, just to make sure, you know, we're all on the same page. The general district court has the same issue. I don't think they were as forceful as I was bringing everyone into the court to look at the things. But they're also, yeah, I, I think I requested maybe 10,000 per employee at one point in time, but there are all, you know, 45 more clerks in the general district court. So I'm mindful that, you know, what, you give me something, you probably need to give them something. You don't really have to. Just give me the, the, the money. But, you know, $44,000 would be great. Anything would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And let's get in touch, and I'd be glad to meet with some of the members of the delegation with you, too.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'm just gonna suggest we take a very brief break going forward. If we could try to make it a little less than 10 minutes, if possible. We do have ambitious agendas still in front of us. Thank you. In re... In re-
Due to fund changes over the landscape and some work that needed to be done, the second and the third phases of this project were canceled. So originally, the project was going to do 90 cameras. We've completed Phase One. There are 32 cameras currently installed to date. We've installed the fiber path that will give us the ability to add cameras in the oceanfront area all the way up until 40th Street. We also have a partnership that's been established with Verizon. And that partnership, they are currently replacing some of their infrastructure along the oceanfront, and they're adding their 5G equipment to the oceanfront area. And there is a partnership that was worked between the city attorney's office, Verizon, and IT where when they install a pole at the oceanfront, we have the ability to place a security camera on the top of that pole. That way, they bear the construction costs of that pole, and the city can concentrate on the fiber run, the infrastructure, and the camera on the top. There was a new CIP that was requested this year to expand the security cameras by the police department, but instead of funding a new CIP, the decision was made to add $300,000 to the existing CIP for this oceanfront camera activity. Next, we'll talk about the FY22 new projects that were added to the program. The first of these is a library meeting space. This was a multi-year request that was to run parallel with the libraries doing their construction improvements at the branch libraries. They're currently underway. They had actually completed some of those projects, and they're working on other ones at this time. Like many technology and infrastructure projects that are in buildings as they're built, a lot of the technology is funded by the F and E budgets, furnishings and equipment budgets for those projects. And many times, there are not funds put aside to refresh and replace those projects, those technologies on a lifecycle basis. That's what happened to the libraries. They had the initial original infrastructure, but then not the ability to maintain and replace that technology as they became outdated or needed repair or maintenance. So this project is going to fund the upgrades to the technology and the audiovisual systems in the central library. That money is targeted for FY22. And what we'll do with that is replace that technology with collaboration equipment where those meeting rooms can be used the way that meetings happen today in a virtual manner. It'll replace the AV equipment. It'll repair and put them in a better shape to use those meeting room spaces by the community. And once that work is done and we determine what technology usage rates and the success to be used by the community, they will be coming back to request additional funds to do the other branch libraries in the future. ECCS backup site. So this is a backup 911 center. Currently, they have a training facility that is at the EMS administration building, Virginia Beach Boulevard area, and they conduct their training out of that space. What they determined was there's really not an alternate work location if Building 30 is inaccessible by either some incident or activity that's going on at Building 30. So if they had to relocate from that facility, there's really nowhere in the city for them to go that gives them the full capabilities that they have at the workstations to take and dispatch calls for the city. So this is adding equipment to their training facility to give them an alternate landing spot if they have issues at Building 30. This funding is programmed for FY24, but I just wanted you to be aware it is programmed and counted as part of that $132 million for the IT CIP section. Electronic poll book replacement is for the general registrar and the voting activity that takes place in the city of Virginia Beach. We work with Donna Patterson and her staff. Essentially, they're poll books. And what the poll books are, this is not the equipment that is used to actually place a vote by a citizen. It's the laptops that they use when folks walk up to check in to determine that they're in the right polling location, that they are registered and eligible voter. Every one of their devices will be past their useful lifecycle by the end of this fiscal year. So they are asking to replace 100% of their poll books and add 14 laptops to give them the ability to increase where the voter precinct turnout is expected to be high. This will also work with their receipt printers, bar code scanners in conjunction with those poll books. And they already have funds to cover the annual operating cost for those devices. They just were not funded by the state, nor did they have the money to do the replacement for those devices. Next project is our HR finance software sustainment. This is to support the new Oracle financial software that's been being utilized by all city departments and agencies. And this provides the need for ongoing support and maintenance beginning in FY22. This will also help with the changes that need to be made in the system that come every year with state and federal mandates that require that software to be changed or reconfigured, if you will. It will also give us the ability to take advantage as new software capabilities come out from the vendor, from Oracle, that they would be able to work to get those features and capabilities available to staff. This one, again, has a pretty well-balanced spending plan throughout the six years of the program. Court technology sustainment. You heard a little bit about this in the earlier presentation. IT has been working with the courts. They came to both IT and facilities management for the city. And as the same discussion points that were there for the libraries, the courts had a lot of their technology established when the new court building was built. They've been able to do some minimal maintenance over time to replace things that have failed, but they really did not have a comprehensive funding source to maintain that hardware and software that's required to operate the evidence portions of the trials and the AV support needed to be effective in those rooms. So this will outfit 21 courtrooms in Building 10 for all three of the courts instead of just working with one of the different court facilities. We did work with looking to target all of those courtrooms that are used for those types of trials, and it does provide a funding stream to keep technology current-supported moving forward. So all six years of the funding that were requested are targeted to be funded in FY22. We do have, as we do every year, quite a few projects that were requested above target and that were also not able to be funded. There are eight of those projects this year. A couple of the highlights for those projects. Municipal center security cameras, that was one that was requested by the sheriff's department. This would align with requests that were part of the overall security study that was done on the municipal center activity. So that one, the $1.6 million to put exterior security cameras at the municipal center, was not able to be funded. Police citywide camera expansion, they did ask to put security cameras not only at the oceanfront, but they were also targeting town center, high-traffic areas of the city as well as Mount Trashmore. Instead of establishing a new CIP, there's $300,000 proposed to go to the oceanfront camera project. And the last one is also essentially security and building security in nature. The in-building notification system was requested because a lot of the city agencies, after the 531 activity, wanted to be able to do an in-building notification, not only to telephones but computers within the municipal center. That one was essentially an expansion of an existing capability that we have with our Cisco telephony system. And so that one did come with a $87,000 price tag for the software, but it also carries an annual recurring cost to maintain that software if it was in fact done. So those were the requested but not funded activities, and that's really the last slide I have today. So I want to see if anybody-
Great. Any questions? Mr. Moss?
Mr. Tower.
I have brought this forward many times before, but generally speaking, when you look at IT services, they really don't have the lifespan that qualifies as a capital expense, nor does IRS even treat them as a capital expense because they don't last long enough to justify borrowing big money and say they're going to last 20 years. But more companies have gone to buying a service because they recognize, that's the way to recognize upfront, that your hardware at the six-year point or sometimes even before then, because the reliability goes asymptotic at about the eight-year mark of any kind of hardware. That's pretty much a benchmark. So between the fourth and the sixth year, you really need to replace it to maintain your system reliability. Those big bills come at one big chunk, and they tend to, like the anaconda trying to eat a crocodile, they might get it, but it dies too. So what you really look at, but if you buying that all along the way and paying the depreciation, the recapitalization as you consume the product, then that vendor comes and replaces your equipment. The cost doesn't get less, but you're not trying to realize it in big chunks. You're paying for it all along. So I think we have to rethink going forward how we want to make sure we're really sustaining and recognizing upfront that we're incurring that liability for that replacement rather than presenting ourselves these big bills that we then can't do. And then what do we do? We tend to defer, and then we get archaic equipment. So when you buy the new software, what happens? The old hardware won't operate it. And I'm sure that's some of the things that you have been experiencing, I suspect. So I think we have to think, maybe this is where we are today, but this isn't the best model to go forward, in my personal opinion. It's not the large industry approach today. These are just a fixed cost of doing business. That's what IT is, a fixed cost of doing business. With regards to the CIP items that are safety-related, we've all said public safety is important. I would like to see alternative offsets for the things that we funded, that we said were more important than keeping employees safe in their buildings, that were more important than keeping people safe in the parking lots at our municipal center. Someone made that choice. I'd just like to understand if we thought that was less of a priority, what would we have to give up in the CIP to put these in? Because public safety is and foremost should be our top consideration. So where can we take other risk that we could defer if council wants to bring that in? Now, it could be that because we're not moving back in the municipal center for some time that that entered into the factor. But then if that's the case, the narrative on that sheet should reflect that so we draw the right conclusion from that unfunded list. That's all I'm asking. Because the public sees it and draws one thing and thinks we're not lined up, Mr. Mayor, with our priorities, but in fact, if there's another narrative that says why we didn't fund them, then that needs to be shared with the public as well so they don't think we're not walking the talk. And that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to respond directly to that safety component. There's about $3 million programmed in the emergency management office specifically for facility upgrades. You know, so we didn't fund all of these requests because we wanted to tie it all into the larger facility security plan. You know, so it is $3 million that are funded and that is proposed to be funded for your review and consideration that the OEM team is going to talk about, which will address some of these facility concerns and security improvements there.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Tower.
I'd like to ask a question about Wi-Fi in city parks. Is the CIP that we saw there, does that cover any additional that's not funded? I think, or maybe there was some, there was like $60,000 or $61,000.
So the Wi-Fi in the parks was one of those not funded requests.
And the requested funding was for $61,400?
So the project, and the way we spec the project out, was the parks, the large part of the project is not the implementation. It's the annual recurring cost to pay for the bandwidth costs that are required to provide that service at the parks. So essentially, we partner with Cox Communications. They help us with our fiber network deployment, and they had agreed to essentially cover the lion's share of the installation of that project, short the $61,000 to $62,000. But again, most of the funds are the required bandwidth at all of those locations. So that's why it shows the large expense from FY23 to '27.
What would $61,000 have paid for?
That's, again, to complete the installation project. And what it would not pay for is the actual service that's required to connect to for those citizens to get out from that park or location.
And this covers city parks, not simply those that might be used on an occasional basis by residents, but also the parks where we have sports teams coming into town to compete. Is that right?
That's correct. So where they were targeting the Wi-Fi was at select fields, including the Princess Anne Athletic Complex. That's where those sports teams and sport tournaments occur. City View Park and the stage area at Mount Trashmore. So those were not every park in the city. Those were select parks. And it was because, as Mr. Kirschman explained, that they were having competition for these tournaments when they come in, and Wi-Fi was being requested by nearly every one of the tournaments that want to use the facility, and it's just not available in Virginia Beach at those facilities.
And is, do you, are you, do you know whether other facilities in which we are competing with have those facilities? Or is that just a wish list?
The indication was yes, that they do, there are competing cities that do offer that capability.
So when we compete with another city to get a tournament and several hundreds or thousands of visitors to participate and stay in our hotels and eat in our restaurants, one of the, one of the things that the sponsors of those tournaments considers is Wi-Fi availability.
Well, they use those not to just connect with your smartphone when you're attending, but they also want to stream the athletic competitions so the families and potential coaches and other folks can see those competitions.
Everybody's up to date on what's happening at different, different locations within the tournament, yeah. I just wanted to point out that that, that one is, doesn't rise to the level of public safety, as Mr. Moss would say, but it certainly has got some impact on our tourism business if we are at a disadvantage competitively on that. I hope we can find a way to fund that, if not this year, certainly in future years. Thanks.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Kevin. And I think Mr. Tower raised a good point. Have we looked at the federal funding for the Rescue Act and it's coming through, maybe not just that one, but the other? Because they've made broadband a pretty big, I think with the pandemic, we realized how important broadband is to just be able to keep things going and to move along with our lives. So I'm just wondering, have we looked at some of that federal funding to see if it would cover?
Kevin, I got it.
Cover that?
Councilmember Wilson, to your point, the rescue, the rescue plan funding does look like it will, at least not in the first tranche, the second tranche will allow for broadband and Wi-Fi expansion as authorized use. The concern we have here is just the ongoing cost of $1 million a year. We wanted to make sure that it would be a sustainable, reoccurring way to pay for it as well, but that is authorized use of the second round of the American Rescue Act plan that's being proposed right now. We don't know all the details on that yet. All those guidelines are being worked out by the Treasury Department, but at a high level, it does look like it'd be authorized use along with sewer and water infrastructure as well.
So $1 million a year is a pretty high dollar amount. I mean, have we looked at making some compromises on the different parks and figuring out which one would be the most important, especially the ones with having tournaments and bringing in, you know, tourism and having them live stream and all of that? And we could whittle that number down?
Right. I hope we've not tried to miscommunicate based on the slide. It's actually $959,000 for the entire six years.
Well, that's what I thought when I read it. So when he said $1 million a year, I was like, whoa.
So it's really about $186,000 a year that we would need to sustain that connected in service at the locations that are targeted.
So when we look at the CARES Act funding, maybe they would let us stretch that time out and see if we can use money for that. Even if it started next year, we could, you know, go ahead and get it started and know that that money would be in place going forward for a while. We could look at that, please. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
You're taking us to the next level. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next presentation will be provided by Daniel Adams for the coastal program, for the CIP coastal program.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dehaney. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. It's my pleasure to present the FY 2022 '27 coastal CIP budget. It's a very straightforward budget this year, basically a carryover from the previous year. No new projects or programs, no new above-target requests, one proposed appropriation adjustment, and a couple of projects to highlight. And I'll try to move through this so we can get to questions pretty quickly. We'll go through a program summary and then look at the project groupings separately and then talk about some challenges and get to questions. Program funding summary going backwards. Here we are. Okay, the bulk of the funding for the coastal program is in beach replenishment. We have 26 projects and programs. The six-year program funding is about $88 million, including appropriate agents to date. The total six-year program is $175.6 million. So we'll get into our project category listings. The first project listing is our coastal beach access and replenishment program. One project I want to highlight is number one, Bay Beaches Restoration. This includes funding for restoration of Ocean Park and Cape Henry Beaches. I'll highlight that in a little bit more detail on a subsequent slide. This section also includes funding for the other city beaches, our beach profile monitoring program, and Sand Bridge beach access improvements. The Sand Bridge projects, number five, six, and seven, are funded through the Sand Bridge SSD. The next grouping is our navigation dredging program. Shows our program funding. One project I'd like to highlight is number two, Eastern Branch Line Haven River dredging. I have another slide to go over that in detail. I did want to point out the one funding adjustment that we are proposing is in Eastern Branch Line Haven River dredging, project number two in FY22, an additional $375,000 to support acquisition of a mechanical dredge transfer station. And we're proposing to reallocate that funding from our Line Haven Inlet Federal dredging project in FY22, a one-time reappropriation of funding for that. Lastly is our neighborhood dredging program summary, our most recently adopted project, number eight, Shelling Point Neighborhood Dredging. It's scheduled to go to its first phase of dredging this summer. We have two projects that are late in delivery, Gil's Cove and Herd's Cove. Because we don't yet have the dredge transfer facility secured in the eastern branch, we need to identify and construct a facility similar to the one we have in the western branch behind the Thalia EMS station. And our plan is to package those two projects with the eastern branch dredging CIP to get a better economy of scale and deliver that project as economically as possible. The other projects in the SSD program with the Roman numeral number two have completed the first cycle of dredging, and funding is now programmed for their upcoming second dredging cycle. And also included is number nine, is the city funding or contribution for the neighborhood spurs that lead from the city main channels into the neighborhood projects. So I did want to highlight the eastern branch from the Line Haven River dredging. This is five miles of dredging of the entire extent of the eastern branch of the Line Haven River from Keeling's Drain all the way down to Virginia Beach Boulevard. We are now doing mechanical dredging in the Line Haven. We do not have any viable hydraulic dredging disposal sites. The last major dredging of the eastern branch occurred in 1991, and this project is sorely needed, and we are showing, again, an additional appropriation in FY22 of $375,000 to support acquisition of the dredge material transfer station. The second project I'd like to highlight is the Bay Beaches Restoration. Again, that provided funding for Ocean Park and Cape Henry Beaches. We had hence before only were able to nourish those two beaches from dredge material that came out of Line Haven Inlet. So we've identified, are identifying some other sources of sand for that project. We first bid Ocean Park in 2020. Bids came in way over budget. The project was unawardable. We have since entered into a partnership with the Ports of Virginia to obtain some economical sand and hopefully a significant volume of sand from the planned harbor deepening project that is slated to go to construction late this year with a completion in 2022. We're looking to obtain between 400,000 and 800,000 cubic yards of sand from that effort. The final volume right now is undefined. It's dependent on whether or not the city of Norfolk is going to be able to cobble some funding and obtain permits. The Ports of Virginia wanted to share some of that material with as many localities that were available to obtain it. We're in a good position. We have our funding identified, and we have our permit applications under review and hope to have permits issued to allow us to obtain the sand from the harbor deepening and place it on our bay beaches. And with that, closing slide, challenges are many, but just would like to close with stating that the city's commitment to funding shore protection has greatly mitigated storm damages. It's evident from some historical images here on this slide. And moving forward, one of our bigger challenges is going to be identifying alternative sand resources. They will need to be explored and managed very carefully to continue the program. With that, would take any discussion or questions?
Okay. Any questions at this point?
Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Tower.
Thank you so much. A great presentation. The harbor sand, do we feel pretty confident it's going to be a good quality to be putting on the beach at Ocean Park?
We do. They've done additional geotechnical exploration. They've indicated to us that there's about 800,000 cubic yards of good beach-quality sand. If we're able to obtain 400,000 cubic yards only, that's enough to complete and fulfill the template for the Ocean Park beach project. Hopefully, we'll get the full 800,000 cubic yards, and we'll be able to provide an early delivery of our planned Cape Henry beach restoration project.
Well, I know some of the Ocean Park folks are-
We'll be a couple of years late.
Really getting anxious to get this done.
Yes.
And earlier would be, would be, when you say earlier, when do you think that might be?
They are planning on advertising that project for construction this summer with an award and a start late this year. When the beach nourishment and placement would start depends on contractor schedule. They have some dredging in the Thimble Shoal Channel that's not beach-quality material that'll go to Cranny Island or an offshore disposal site. So if they get to the beach-quality sand section sooner, the project placement will occur sooner on the beaches. If it's later in their contract, it'll be, it'll be later. So we really do not know at this time what the definitive schedule is.
Thank you for your hard work.
Hey, Mr. Jones.
Do you, have you heard yet whether Norfolk's going to have the money to purchase their part of that available sand?
What we have heard is they had not yet identified enough funding for 400,000 cubic yards, nor did they have permit applications underway. We have not heard definitively about that.
If they don't have the money, we're going to be able to get the rest of it?
We're expecting 800,000 cubic yards.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Tower.
Thanks for your presentation. Could you tell me about two things? One, I'd like to ask about the situation at Rudy Inlet and the dredging. I hear from various folks who are very interested in the Marina District and the property surrounding Rudy Inlet that we need a permanent fix for the Rudy Inlet. Rudy Inlet, that we need a permanent fix for the Rudy Inlet problem that is the sholing and, and the problem whether our extensions out into the, the wiers and other extensions out into the ocean are doing the job, whether they need to be rebuilt, extended further, and the like. What plans, if any, are in the works to address that in a longer-term manner? I take, there's a lot of money in the, in the current or next year's CIP. Is that mainly for a dredge?
There is. There were several things, and there's some good news to report on that. There, there's money programmed in the CIP for a replacement dredge of the Rudy Two. The city's contemplating a slightly larger dredge that has more capabilities to attack the sholing of the entrance channel.
But, but that wouldn't really work for farther out? Is it, it's not built for that?
It would still have limitations. It would, and would not be able to work in the sea conditions that the Army Corps Fleet of dredges can work in, or that the contracting industry's dredges can work in. The issue there has been availability of dredging, of dredges, either the Corps Fleet, which is stretched pretty thin, and we did bid the full-depth contract dredging of Rudy Inlet, or the Army Corps did last year. Bids came in 50% higher than the government estimate, so that contract could not be awarded. They plan on rebidding that project this summer. 50,000 cubic yards of material from the Outer Deposition Basin is planned to be placed on Croatan to address some dune erosion and beach erosion there. And the, the, the good news to report is we expect more availability from the Army Corps dredge fleet in the future. We have a briefing we're working to schedule and get more information from them on that in the coming weeks, but the state of North Carolina has entered into the dredging business. They purchased a dredge to work Rudy Inlet and other inlets in the state, and we, we expect to indirectly benefit from that by that freeing up some of the Corps dredge fleet resources.
So the answer to the Rudy Inlet is that we're, we're just going to solve it with more dredging? Is that?
That is the short-term solution. The, the wear and jetty infrastructure is, is working. It's working as designed. The sholing is ongoing. It's continuous. It's a, it's a man-made inlet. It requires constant bypassing just to keep up with the amount of sand that is, is moving along the coast. Then periodically, it requires maintenance dredging from the Army Corps Fleet to come remove small spot sholing, and ideally on a three-to-five-year cycle, and we've been, we've been off on the cycle. It's been seven years since we had a major full-depth dredging event because of lack of federal funding mainly, but we will get in there and take a full-depth cut of the entire federal channel and the Outer Deposition Basin, and that should greatly reduce the maintenance dredging frequency and the, the number of days of sholing that we've been seeing in recent years.
Well, that's good to hear. It is, that is good news indeed. I just continue to hear that while it may, while the design may be working, it may be working as designed, that the design is flawed and that it needs to be redone with a different design, but that, that a, that a long-term solution needs. But obviously, the immediate problem is the dredging, so I'm glad to hear that. I, I would be interested in any attempt to convene the various professions and stakeholders to talk about that problem in the long run, because I, I still have the feeling that we, we ought to have a bigger, longer-term view of what needs to be done at Rudy Inlet. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Jones had a follow-up?
Now, back to the Lynn Haven River. The dredging, is that of the Lynn Haven, the overall project, is that going to be mechanical or hydraulic?
It will be mechanical. We, all of our dredging for the foreseeable future.
What about, say, the Shilling Point project? What will that be?
That's mechanical, and that will be using the Thalia dredge transfer facility for dredge transfer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Henley.
Well, we finally got the Sand Bridge sand project done last year. I know that that kind of went a little longer than we had thought and so forth, but last year and last year's budget, we decided that we no longer needed the TIF, and we actually reduced the SSD three cents on the real estate. In looking at your projections for when we need to do it again and how the money is coming in, are you satisfied that that's still adequate? Or that there would be, are we okay with it?
We are, and our budget analysts took a hard look at that last year when they decided to just go along with the SSD funding and do away with the TIF, and they're confident that that's, that's sufficient rate to, to fund the need.
So you're comfortable that we, we have the funding available to do the project the next time it's necessary?
Absolutely. The funding appears to be sound for, for Sand Bridge.
And, and what are we thinking now? I mean, I know we were thinking every three years, but what is it probably more like every four years, or have we?
We've gone, it looks like we've gone about six to seven years between major replenishment cycles, so we've, the, the project has overperformed in that respect, because we've been able to put a critical mass of sand on the beach, and we've actually been able to incrementally advance the shoreline and the width of the beach over time.
It's always good to find that something has performed well and actually overperformed. That's good. Thank you very much. Y'all doing a great job.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, as I indicated earlier, you know, we're going to have a little bit more of an ambitious executive session, and then later on, we're going to be, we have quite a few speakers coming to talk to us. So if we could just go out of sequence just for a little bit, if we can do the agenda first, and then we'll, we'll get back to council discussion. Mr. Wood?
Okay, under ordinances, resolutions, items J-1 and J-7 have multiple speakers. Does anybody want to hear or pull any of these other items, items two through six and eight and nine?
Actually, J-7 and J-8 are both for encroachments for piers in the canals down at, at Sand Bridge. And I know that seven is one that has got a number of speakers. I would really like to defer both of these for two weeks. We, unless we can notify the speakers that we are going to defer it, I guess we would probably hear it. But I've learned that the issue with the one that's number seven really has a bit of history. It's been to the Wetlands Board. It's been to, I guess, VMRC, and, and we didn't have, we don't have all of that information. When I started asking the staff for some background, and I, I just came to realize that maybe it was more than they were going to be able to get together for us to hear it today, and it would only be fair to say, let's defer it. One of my concerns is, you know, we have routinely been approving these. You know, if the, if the staff says this is okay, then we do, and maybe I have not been keeping track enough to know if they are, have been gradually increasing in size and just what the impact is. I would really like for us during this two weeks, if you see fit, to defer it, to kind of look at the cumulative impact of, of all that we've been approving. I think it's important that we treat everybody the same, that we treat all the property owners fairly, and I noticed that the Wetlands Board, apparently in hearing this one, had recommended that there be a standard, maybe 100 square feet of coverage that's allowed, and it might be a good idea for us to just see what these are doing down there and, and come up with a, a standard so that we don't have one that gets to be really big and has the impact that I think some are fearing that one of these might have. So I would really like to have some overall look at just what these are that we've been approving, how many there are, what the average size is, and so forth, because I think the questions that have been raised about the one that's in item seven especially are concerned about maybe some impacts that it might be having on the ability of SAV to recover and, and, and things of that nature. So I would just like to have a look at just what's happening down at Sand Bridge.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I count five speakers other than the applicant and staff. Can your staff call and?
We can as long as council gives me okay.
Is everybody okay with deferring this one?
Yeah, let's go.
And we do not have speakers on J-8, but we can also call, I don't know that we have the applicant's information. I can reach out to Bobby Tohan, to Mr. Tohan and have him.
I think it's only fair to, to defer that one as well, so that we, if we are going to look at them in a overall fashion and so forth, that we make sure that we're treating everybody the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so then, does anybody have, so items one, seven, and eight will either be heard or deferred. Does anybody have any issues with any of the others?
Okay, and then I'm planning?
Okay, I'm planning. Items K-1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9. So 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9 all have speakers.
All have speakers.
No, these are all, all will be pulled.
Those are the ones which speak?
1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 9. Okay, so item 2, Jaime Diamond for a conditional use permit at Ray Short Term Rental at 3817 Daiquir Lane in the Centerville District. Ms. Wooton. You want to have that heard? All right, so we'll pull that one. Okay, item 7, Cynthia Shepherd, conditional use permit, short terminal at 30428th Street, Unit 201, Beach District. Mr. Tower. Item 7, under planning. Yeah, it is. All right, does anybody wish to vote nay on that? Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, did you wish to vote nay on that as well? I saw your hand go up, I thought.
Yeah, I'm trying to decide.
Okay.
All right, well.
If it's going to be on sand, I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Item 8, Ryan Summers for conditional use permit, same address, Unit 113, Beach District. Mr. Tower, same for the three of you? Okay. Item 10, Richard and Patricia Hall Rivocable Living Trust, conditional use permit, short term rental, 947 Indian Circle, Beach District. So you want to have that heard? Do we have this? Let me see if we have the speakers for that.
For number 10?
10.
Wait a minute.
Do we have, do we have the applicant? Okay, so we do have the applicant, so we'll have to hear that one. All right, item 11, Charles K. Bain and Kathy Bain for a conditional use permit at Ray Short Term Rental at 915 Pacific Avenue, Unit A, Beach District. You're okay with that? Anyone wish to vote nay? Mr. Jones? Lewis, do you want to vote no on that? Do you want to vote no on number 11? That one's on consent. Okay. Well, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
That's it?
Yes, so there's very, very little.
All right, moving on, council liaison reports, anyone? Mr. Moss?
MEDAC met last week, and they were highly encouraged and liked our future design for an association, willing to do whatever they can do, and they continue to report on initiatives to get exiting military to line up with local businesses and industries to meet some of our skill deficiencies for competition for industry. That was the bulk of the stuff.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on liaison reports? Okay, we're going to now, council comments. Yes?
Briefly, under old business, I'm going to talk about Cavalier Long, and under new business, I want to talk about a letter on the budget that I'm going to be handing out.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moss. Okay, all right. Yes, Ms. Wilson.
I think all of us got this HRT Oceanfront's report from BA Andrews. I thought it was really well done, because he's a bus driver, and he's, he's driving the buses, and he sees where there's things that could be improved upon. I would really hope the staff would look at this and see if we can make some improvements. A lot of them are little tiny things, but it would, it would really improve things, and in the long run, I think it would really help us. So if you didn't get a copy of this report, Mr. Dehaney, I'm glad to share mine. Thank you.
He did get a, a copy.
Great.
Councilmember Wilson, and also Mr. Andrews is going to be attending tonight in person and speaking during the open dialogue.
Oh, good. He put a lot of time and effort into it, and he's boots on the ground, and I thought he really had some good, good points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect a bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3, Princess Anne District. And then legal matters: consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect a negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2371A7. Holloway et Al versus City of Virginia Beach and Adams Outdoor versus City of Virginia Beach. Do I have a motion? Second? Okay, please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abbott is absent. Councilmember Belucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Ten to zero.
Okay, we are recessed into executive.